Excellent. Hello, everyone. Welcome to the September 5th meeting of the Amherst Planning Board. The first item on our list of agenda for tonight, we're going to be skipping and moving directly to old business. This is a discussion of the proposed zoning amendments for fall town meeting. Just for sort of, as sort of a lead in, I'll give a little, little bit of a scheduling The warrant review for, let's see, let me start here. Citizen petitions for the zoning subcommittee meeting are due September 19th at the latest. We have a staff and committee article list due September 24th. This board has public hearings probably scheduled for October 3rd and 17th. And the deadline for the first town meeting mailing is October 23rd. Fall town meeting begins November 19th. So, that's our schedule. This board has the following potential public hearing schedule for zoning amendments. September 5th, that's tonight, rental registration requirements and surface water supply protection. September 19th, functional family amendment and the lodging or boarding house definition. October 3rd, two-family dwelling and converted dwellings. October 17th, single-family dwelling. So, at this point, I will turn it over to Chris. What have you got?
I just wanted to point out that I think the schedule of public hearings has changed since I sent the packets out.
All right.
So, Mr. Crowner may have a more up-to-date version of when the public hearings will be.
Okay. I'm not sure that I do, but I'll give it a try. So, the zoning subcommittee has really been working hard on this mandate that we've gotten about addressing residential rental issues from, you know, a variety of uses. And what I'm going to do is try and catch you up on where we are right now. We've, we've reached consensus on some issues, but respecting the interest of the board and the authority of the board to possibly go in a different direction, I'm going to try and explain where we see the issues are, what decisions we've made, but which you might want to go in a different direction. So, to the extent that I remember that, my colleagues will help me if I forget, hopefully. So, in addition to the two amendments that we have scheduled for tonight, we have two more that we think are ready for review by you and a full hearing, a public hearing. We think we're just about, that two dwelling units is just about ready, duplexes, and lodging, boarding house definition is ready to go. That leaves converted dwellings, which we're still working on, single dwelling units, which we're still working on, and functional family, which we're not sure that we're going to be able to finish. So, I'll start with lodging and boarding house. So, you've, the planning board has already decided that we're not going to try and make any changes to the use chart, but we do think that it's useful to add a definition to the bylaw, in part to help clarify the ongoing discussion that we've been having about residential uses in general. So, we've noticed that houses where large numbers of people are living are often referred to as lodging or boarding houses incorrectly. This language actually has a specific meaning in our bylaw. And so that our discussions can be comprehensible, and so that a clear understanding of the term can be easily located in the bylaw, we're proposing to add a formal definition. This definition is pretty much duplicative of language that's already in the bylaw, in the use chart, and in Article 5, which covers accessory uses, or in mass general law, except that it adds an explicit range for the number of borders that is covered by this use, at a six to 10. A particular note is that a lodging or boarding house, in every case, includes an owner or manager in residence. So, a lodging or boarding house is not a large house that has a lot of people in it, unless it has an owner living there who is renting out individual rooms. So, we think it's useful to be clear about that. Onto duplexes. This amendment would establish two different use categories for duplexes as we've discussed, owner-occupied duplexes and non-owner-occupied duplexes. And those categories would have specific names that I just mentioned, rather than the Class 1, Class 2 designations that we've had in earlier drafts. An owner-occupied duplex would retain all of the current permitting standards that regulate duplexes now, special permit in some zones, and site plan review in others. A non-owner-occupied duplex would require a special permit in every zone that it is allowed. Furthermore, it would allow, though not require, the permit granting body to require an onsite resident manager or professional property management as a condition of approval of the special permit. The creation of this new use category and the provision for a potential resident manager condition are in direct response to the erosion of neighborhoods that we have heard so much about and experienced over the last few years. On the other hand, we are reluctant to propose removing the site plan review by right standard from all duplexes, or to require owner occupancy of all duplexes, because doing either would contradict a community goal, as expressed in the master plan and elsewhere, of promoting slightly more dense and diverse housing stock in some neighborhoods for reasons of energy efficiency and sensible land use. You will hear differently during public comment tonight and at the public hearing later, and you may wish to ask us, the zoning subcommittee, to do some more work on this amendment for the public hearing. If so, please be clear about what you want to result. Otherwise, this is the proposal that's in your packet, that we think makes sense and strikes the right balance between protection of neighborhoods and our other housing goals. So, this amendment does two other fairly important things. It establishes a standard for what constitutes a duplex, namely that it is two dwelling units that in appearance are contained in a single cohesive structure, with some flexibility for the permitting body. And it adds several definitions to help us interpret and apply the zoning bylaw. In particular, there is a definition for onsite resident manager and for principal residents, which is intended to clarify who qualifies as an owner occupant. The areas of controversy for this amendment include the following. Should there be two kinds of duplex use regulated differently? Should any duplex be allowed by site plan review? Should any be allowed by special permit? Should a resident manager be absolutely required, or should it be an option for the permit granting body? Are the requirements for principal residents written tightly enough, or could they be We considered, but ultimately decided not to pursue, to propose at this time, that the planning board be the permit granting body for two-unit special permits of any kind, rather than the ZBA. There are good arguments concerning consistency of review, ownership of the proposal, and workload of the ZBA for choosing that option, but we did not want to distract from the more pressing point of responding to public demand. So, we request that you consider these points in your discussion, and if you think we don't have it quite right, ask us to make the changes. Tonight, we worked on converted dwellings and realized that it's pretty complicated. One of the things that came up in our discussion of duplexes is that where, the assumption has been that there's a single owner, whether they live there or not, but we realized that a duplex could consist of two owners. And so, that creates potential permitting inconsistencies. If you have two owners living there and then one moves out and rents, is that an owner-occupied duplex, or is it not? Is that not owner-occupied anymore? So, that needs to be addressed, and we think that we're going to address that by expanding the definition of a single dwelling unit. So, a single dwelling unit will likely consist of an attached or detached unit, or two units. A single dwelling unit can be attached or detached to another single dwelling unit in a duplex, and they would be regulated however we decide to regulate those, or however town meeting decides to regulate those. Converted dwelling, we're making the definition of converted dwelling so that it's clear what a converted dwelling is as opposed to a duplex, or the creation of a duplex. And what we're suggesting, or what we're working on, not finished yet, is to say that a converted dwelling consists of an existing structure that has up to 20% of new or reconstructed habitable space. If it's more than that, if you add another structure or demolish more than 20% and reconstruct it, you're talking about a different use, and that will be permitted differently, by special permit if it's a duplex, if it turns into a duplex, or an apartment house, or whatever. There's a interesting dilemma that our current proposal would require a, a special permit for a converted dwelling that consists of simply putting up a separating wall, like we've seen in a couple of applications. That would require a special permit, but it's actually a creation of a duplex. If the owner lives there, if that was a duplex to begin with, that would be a, a site plan review permit under our current proposal. However, because it's a, this unit, this use would be a new use of converted dwelling, it might be a special permit. So, we need to clarify how, how those differences are going to be regulated. Other issues that came up in the converted dwelling discussion, should there be a carve-out for institutionally-owned, nonprofit-owned property that is being converted from single use to two uses or four units? The Amherst College, or Hampshire College, or UMass-owned buildings? The consensus of the zoning subcommittee is that we did not want to create a carve-out, but there are reasons to think that it's okay. So, we'd like you to consider that. Else? There, oh, right. So, the current language under converted dwelling would allow in the RG and RVC zones, is that right? Creation of up to six units in a converted dwelling. We are aware that people are very concerned about buildings, structures that are existing currently as single-family houses, that are being bought up and turned into other kinds of structures. And people are very concerned about the increased density that these structures have, whether legal or illegal. So, there was some talk about restricting conversions to four units, or some number lower than six. We decided not to propose going there, but you will hear comment tonight and in the public hearing that we should lower that. So, I would ask that you take that under consideration and let us know what direction you'd like us to take. Finally, I guess, the functional family definition is, is important to provide an outlet for the diversifying structure of households in this area and in the world at large. It provides a balance to the restrictions that we're putting on, or that, that we're focusing on, restricting structures to four unrelated people, dwelling units to four unrelated people, that we're hoping is going to be more solidly enforced going forward, particularly after the spring. But there are, we can come up with plenty of examples of, of households that consist of more than four people who are technically unrelated, but who should be allowed to live together. However, this is a very complicated definition, that we don't want to accidentally create a situation where we're allowing more than four unrelated people who don't, who we don't really want to be living in a single place. And we don't think that we're going to have this finished in time for the fall. We don't think we have time to vet it properly before the fall. However, if you think that it's important enough to vet, you know, we'll, we'll make an attempt at it. But our recommendation right now is that we put that on the back burner and try and get to that by the spring. So, I'm sorry if I cut into time for public comment. It's, it's important, but we've done a lot of work. There's a lot of articles that we're working on, and we're making progress as best we can.
No apologies necessary, Mr. Crowner. That's a very good and succinct summary. Thank you very much for that. Just in the interests of just giving people a big picture of this meeting tonight, we have one, two, three, four official public hearings to get through tonight, as well as our other business. So, our time spent on this segment of zoning is going to be more limited than it normally is. We'll, we'll spend as much time as we can. I think we'll go till seven, we'll go 10 minutes over till 7:40 on the, on the zoning amendments, but we have a lot to get through tonight. Did anybody from the planning board have questions for the zoning subcommittee about these? What do you think about, I'll just start with the last thing. Is there consensus on whether we should release the zoning subcommittee from working on the functional family for the fall, seeing as they have come to the idea that it's too much for them to handle? Ms. Anderson?
Yeah, I just have a question for the subcommittee. Does the definition, the functional family, pop up in any of the other bylaws that you're working on, such that as if you refer to it, you've got two newly, one, two, or three newly edited bylaws, and then you're referring to something that isn't edited or vetted?
So, the, there is reference to family or household in, in several of the bylaws, but, but there's already a definition of family in the bylaw. So, so if we don't change it, that, that's what will pertain. What we're suggesting is that, that we need to expand our, our understanding of what a family is, or what a household is. It's just, it's just that there's a lot of things that need to go into consideration. So, there's no particular amendment, proposed amendment that, that would address the expanded definition of household that we're talking about, but, but it's, it's, it is referenced.
Mr. Tucker?
If I may, there is one reference to functional family in the single-family dwelling amendment, but that's easy enough to excise if we decide not to go forward with that.
Certainly, the, the scope of the zoning subcommittee's work is pretty large, considering that, I mean, there's, these are very detailed and important zoning amendments we're bringing I, I don't have any objection to holding off on the, the functional family piece if the committee needs to focus on other things. Anybody feel differently? Okay. So, we'll scratch the family, household, functional family definition until after fall town meeting. That one's off the slate.
And the most recent version, version is the eight, dated 8:30? Okay.
That's the one I have. Okay, thank you. All right. The, so the pieces that you had said that were largely complete were the duplex and the, the large lodging and boarding. You gave a pretty good explanation of those, and we have the language in front of us. Any specific questions from the board at this point? Okay. At this time, I'll take some comments from the public. Due to our lack of time, I'm, I'm wondering if anybody on the board has a watch that they could use. I, I think I'm going to limit public comment to two minutes a person. Mr. Schreiber? Can you watch the clock?
Oh, I think you weren't asking for the watch.
No, no.
Oh, sorry.
I can't do everything.
No, no.
Okay. So, if anybody wants to, from the public, please raise your hand, come forward if you'd like to speak. Anything to do with zoning, anything from the zoning subcommittee? Yes, sir?
My name's Mike Dietrich. Precinct 10, is it 10, am I right? I want to thank the zoning committee for taking on so many of these complicated issues, especially the rental registration requirements. But I have to tell you, from my perspective, it's too little, too late. For seven years, I've lived in McClure Street, which is right next to the UMass campus, and we've decided to sell and leave this month. The conditions have become intolerable. This fall, when we got back from sabbatical, a landlord came and offered us, without our asking for it, to purchase the house. And we looked around our neighborhood. We saw UMass switching to, from family housing to student housing in Lincoln Apartments. We saw the three houses, 328, 321, and 290 on Lincoln being sold. When we bought our house seven years ago, the six abutting properties, four were families. Now, two are families. When we sell our house at the end of the month, the two houses left next to us will now be completely surrounded by rental units. I know that behavior and other kinds of things aren't the purview of the committee, but I would like to raise a couple of things that I think are, and that I think you should address. One of the biggest issues for us is a health and safety issue. Both of our neighbors have very large lots on either side of us. They go from Lincoln all the way to McClure Street. They're both rentals now. Both of those lots have been turned into parking lots. At the maximum, they've had 18 cars in them. Okay? We didn't buy a house next to a parking lot for 12 to 18 cars. Both fences on either side have been run through by cars in those parking lots, one within 12 feet of our kitchen door, one within 12 feet of our daughter's playground swing set. They shouldn't be there. It's not safe or healthy for our children to play in their backyard anymore. It's not safe or healthy for us to be breathing in that exhaust. It's completely unregulated, as far as we can tell, by the town of Amherst. We went to the town planning committee three years ago when our neighbor decided to hardscape his backyard. It was within the town bylaws. There was nothing we could do. He's allowed to cover 40% of his property, which means they can now park 12 cars in his backyard. He gets a second egress out the back, which means you now have a cut-through from Lincoln to McClure Street.
If you could wrap it up, please.
Okay. So, I would urge you to do something about student parking, or renter parking, however you wish to frame it. It's one of the things that we think is simply intolerable. Already, the property Mr. Sang has bought, at 321, was it, has four cars parked in its backyard tonight. When the garage comes down, more will go in. So, to sum it up, that's one of the many reasons why we've chosen to leave that neighborhood. I urge you to do even more than you're already doing. I don't think rental registration's enough. I would like to see a permit, a rental permit system, with strong enforcement that allows us to have some recourse besides selling our house and leaving.
Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate your comment.
John Fox, precinct 10. Let me speak about a broad topic, and then the particular questions I've had, and you know about, about the definition of principal residents. I would hope that all of you would engage in this exercise, and that is looking at the zoning that you have, looking at the zoning that is being proposed, all of the detailed amendments and the rest, that you have a serious discussion about how they're likely to play out over time. I never hear any discussion of that. In other words, you can't know exactly how people are going to behave, you don't know how all the changes are going to play out exactly, but you need a game plan, you need a vision for the town. And I am very concerned, as are numerous other people who live and love the residential area, in the downtown area, near the university, that what you are attempting to do is inadequate to stop the inevitability, if you don't stop it, of student rentals taking over the residential area. So, I urge you to figure out a way, you may need to bring in an expert or something, to help you take your bylaws and see over the next five, 10 years, how they play out. For example, we mentioned earlier, in your earlier meeting, that you're going to allow a large residence, family-owned, to be converted from that family residence to up to six units. And there are lots of those buildings around RG that could be converted. There are LLCs dying to do it. And so, we go from a family to six units at a minimum, that's 24 kids, if they are students. And we know it's not 24. We know it's a good deal more because they load them up. It means cars and all the rest. I'd like you to project, if you allow that, what's going to happen to downtown five, 10 years? So, in other words, look at, look at the big picture and see what your documents and what your chain, proposed changes, where they're heading. The second is on the particular principal residents. The whole argument for having a different set of requirements for owner occupant versus non-owner occupant is the overwhelming evidence that you've heard and agree with, that the presence of an owner occupant makes a real difference in the behavior in a duplex. So, if the owner occupant is there, then the students behave. In, in general, we not had any problem, but where there is absentee ownership, you have every, virtually every case involves the absentee ownership. There is nothing in your definition of principal residents that requires the owner physically to be there most of the year, nothing. You, you played around with it and parsed it, but you can show that you vote from there, you have your car registered from there, maybe you have a telephone, maybe you have a mailing address, but there's nothing that says that most of the year, more than six months out of the year, the owner has to be there. If you conclude that you can't, you're not willing to accept that, and if you conclude that, in fact, the owner often won't be there, anything like six months out of the year, I suggest to you that the owner occupant distinction has no value. In other words, you've been carrying on a great deal about owner occupancy, unless you build into the mandate that the owner actually has to be there physically, and that's the only way the owner's going to control the behavior of students, and will be, and will control them. If you feel you're not capable of doing that, I think you are, but if you feel you're not capable of doing that, then, 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 then you can forget this distinction between owner occupant and non-owner occupant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. And that sentiment has been echoed by several people, including in written comments to the planning board, that the distinction between owner occupied and non-owner occupied is maybe not as important as we've made it out to be, that perhaps the way to go is to apply the same requirements to the, to all dwellings regardless of whether they're owner occupied or not. That eliminates the problem of trying to define whether someone is owner occupied or not, and it holds all owners to the same standard. Okay. Any other public comment?
My name's Steve Bloom, in Outham Precinct 10. I actually wrote a statement, but it's, it's way too long. It won't be two minutes. Do you guys actually read these things separately?
We do.
You do? Okay, good. My, my thing is, I don't understand how all this stuff, all the pieces fit together, family, the definition of what a functional family is. The main, I don't even know how that, I'm very confused by all this. And maybe you can, if you have time, you can explain it to me. The way I see things heading is that our neighborhood is either going to, we're going to pursue it being declared a historical district. That seems to be the only recourse. It sounds like that's what North Amherst is pursuing. It seems like we have no choice. I, I mean, I don't really want to, we've been talking to our neighbors, we really don't want to go that route, but I just don't see anything changing to what you guys are saying, and maybe I'm not hearing you properly. What I think that you guys should devote your time to, and I'm new to this neighborhood, and I really, you know, don't know much of what I'm saying, but I think this permitting thing is the way to go. I think unless you can have the option to revoke a permit, then you, then the registration is meaningless. I think you should have it be that, that how, that these rental units have parking passes that you can enforce, so there's the same number of cars. I think there should be fees for the parking passes. I think there should be fees to finance this. I think there should be fines. I think there should be a clearly defined number of infractions, not just nuisance calls, but, I'm not, including nuisance calls, not just the rents, and, and after which a landlord's permit can be revoked for a set amount of time. I read this book, College Town, which is about other college towns, and they talked about the University of Delaware. I don't, I was told today that, that this might already be in place. I think that whenever there's an infraction, the university should be informed, and the university should inform the parents of those who are cited. And these are all things that have occurred at other college towns. And that's what I think that we should be putting our attention to, not owner-occupancy, because I don't think that will fly, in my limited experience through, through town meeting. So is there any, is there any objection to trying to pursue a permitting system? Is there some sort of legal thing that prevents it from occurring, or?
No. These, the permitting system is being put together by, by, I mean, I think there's a movement afoot in town government to implement basically more or less what you're talking about, plus or minus some details. You may be aware that a couple of weeks ago, a mailer was sent out with respect to the current rental registration requirements that are already in effect. That was sent to all property owners.
Yes, but with all due respect, sir, that was voluntary, so.
I know it's voluntary. Okay, so that's a, the, my understanding is, that's what is in the works. We were told by the, we, at this meeting, maybe a month ago, we had the, the building inspector, the code enforcement officer, and the health department, head of the health department, come in and talk to us about how they are working and drawing up a permitting system that's, that is workable for them. Currently, they're trying to get as many names on the list as possible of landlords, so that when the permitting system goes into effect, if they're able to get it through town meeting or whatever they need to do, that they'll have a starting point for contacting landlords.
Is this process, this permitting process that you're exploring, is it open to the public, so we can have input into it?
It will be. It hasn't, I haven't seen anything on paper yet myself.
And when do you project this happening? Because the time is an element now.
We were told that, that it couldn't be ready for fall town meeting, but that they were hoping to have it ready for spring.
I would suggest, I mean, that it, I actually have been sending out feelers with other people and other, you know, this isn't just restricted to our neighborhood. It's happening in some way, it's happening all through the town. And I put out feelers, and I actually think if you proposed a permitting system, that it would get the two-thirds that it needs through town meeting. So I would, I would, you know, in my limited experience, I would urge you to make that the priority, and not this, you know, owner-occupancy, because I don't think that's going to fly myself. Anyway, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Bloom. We appreciate it. Any further public comment before we move to the public hearing on rental registration requirements? Yes, sir, please come forward.
So, hi, Rolf Carlstrom, Precinct 10. Yeah, over the last few weeks and months, we've learned an awful lot. I would say we've talked a lot about owner-occupancy. I appreciate all the discussion that this board has taken on. You've been very responsive to our, our comments. I'm going to have to be very blunt, however, that what has come out of all this discussion, I would view as, well, Mike Dietrich's put it well, too little, too late. We have a situation in Amherst in the year 2012, with a viable, vibrant family neighborhood adjacent to a large state university. That is a miracle. I would say, without a strong permitting system in place, fall town meeting as soon as possible, within a few years, you will have a student ghetto surrounding UMass, like there is in Newark, around University of Delaware, like there is in many, almost every other major college town. So if you haven't read this book, Americans College Towns, this stuff has been done in the 80s and the 90s. It's been tried over and over, and the only effective method has been a strong permitting system, where renting is a commercial activity, that is a privilege to rent, and if a landlord does what landlords do all the time, every day in Amherst, they lose their right to rent. I think we need to do that now. I think in a few years, you will have presided over what happened in State College, what happened in Newark, Delaware, what's happened in many, many places. It's too bad. We'll be on Mike Dietrich's heels if we don't do something much stronger than the language that's been coming out of this. My final comment is, I have noticed a mindset for infill in RG that seems to indicate town is more than willing to sacrifice a vibrant family neighborhood in the interest of infill in that neighborhood. I don't think most neighbors agree with that philosophy. I think most of town would not be willing to sacrifice a viable family neighborhood to create a student ghetto. I'm pretty confident that's what we're doing right now. So that's my comment.
Thank you, sir. All right. Thanks, everybody, for your comments. We appreciate all, all the folks who, who came in for the, for the zoning subcommittee. I wish I had more time to devote to just general discussion, but we're going to move to more specifics, and it's pretty much a good segue here. This is a public hearing. In accordance with the provisions of Section 5 and 11 of Chapter 48, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to the Mass Department of Housing and Community Development, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and to abutting towns. This hearing is being held for the purpose of providing an opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding these proposed amendments to the Amherst zoning bylaw. These amendments will be on the town meeting warrant for the 2010 annual meeting.
2012.
Sorry, let the tape recorder run. That's the 2012 annual town meeting. A0113, rental registration requirements. To amend Section 3.32 Residential Uses and Section 5.011 Supplemental Apartments of the zoning bylaw, by adding a requirement for registration of all rental dwelling units and operation of those units in conformance with the rental regulations of the town of Amherst. And, Ms. Brester?
May I just point something out? In your packets, I've tried to separate out the zoning amendments that you were talking about just now, from the things that you'll be discussing as public hearings. So the second yellow sheet begins the public hearing material for tonight.
This, thank you, Ms. Brester. And that was very helpful. The article with respect to rental registration requirement would read as follows. "All rental dwelling units shall be registered by their owners under the applicable rental regulations of the town of Amherst and operated in conformance with those and any related regulations. Registrations must be renewed as necessary and kept current at all times." I'll speak to the meaning of this, as I understand it, which is to put in place in the zoning bylaw a reference to the current registration requirements of the Board of Health, which require all landlords to register their rentals with the town of Amherst. The current registration scheme does not have a lot of enforcement mechanism to it. In fact, it's minimal. There's a $10 fine per day for non-compliance. The idea behind this particular zoning amendment is to put language in place, not only to cover the current system, but also to be flexible enough to require the same thing from any future enforcement scheme that's put into place by the Building Department and the Board of Health. As a result, this definition that I read would be added to a number of different places in the zoning bylaw as a, as a marker and a, and a requirement that goes with each of the different following residential uses. There would be single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, townhouses, apartments, subdivisible dwellings, and converted dwellings, as well as any mixed use and as its own subsection.
That's, that's accessory apartments.
Accessory apartments, okay. Thank you, Mr. Crowder. Would you like to say a piece on this?
Sure. So this, first of all, this is, this is not the magic bullet. This, this is not going to solve the problem. But it is an important step. As everyone, or as most people have recognized, a rental registration slash permitting system that is enforced and that has real consequences is, is the key piece of, of controlling the problems that we're having with, with residential use all over town. This, this language adds a condition to all residential uses that, if it is rented, it must be registered, regardless of what system is currently in place, the current one or the, the future one, which we hope will be a lot better. So this just adds it to all the, all of the uses, it's a condition of any residential use. If it's rental, it has to be registered.
Thank you, Mr. Crowder. Mr. Tucker?
This, this may be repeating something that you said earlier, but make, putting this in the zoning bylaw adds enforcement of the zoning bylaw to the set of tools available for this. Currently, under the Board of Health regulations, as you noted, it's only a $10 fine. Under zoning, it's a $100 fine for each violation, and every day that the violation continues is a separate violation. So it suddenly adds teeth to the existing system and adds a wider range of enforcement capacity.
So for instance, let me just pull up an example of how this might work, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. A landlord, say that a, well, say that a, a property owner in Amherst moves out of town and decides to rent their residence to a group of students, and fails to register that residence with the town as a rental. As it stands now, the Board of Health can, on, if someone complains to the Board of Health, the Board of Health can say, "You failed to register your rental," you know, "the fine is $10." Whereas if this is passed, the building inspector or the code enforcement officer can come in and say, "You're not in compliance with the zoning. The fine is $100 a day until you register your dwelling."
That's correct.
Comments from the board? Questions? Mr. Rosnoy?
Yeah, I, I'm wondering, I don't know who might answer this, maybe Mr. Tucker, or maybe somebody from the zoning subcommittee. We heard from the health officer a couple of weeks ago that that system really was never really implemented, and there hasn't really been any enforcement of it. And we also heard from the zoning enforcement officer that his plate is pretty full. How, I guess this is a question from Mr. Tucker. How would this get implemented? In a practical way, do you see this being implemented, or is there going to be additional staff needed to enforce it, or how, how's this going to work?
Between now and next spring, when the town hopes to bring the rental regulation system under the general bylaws to town meeting for adoption, this would be enforced by the health director, the building commissioner, the zone, the code enforcement officer, who is the principal lead enforcer on this, any of the building inspectors, we have at least two other building inspectors, who are enabled to use non-criminal disposition ticketing, basically hand them a, a ticket that says you owe $100 for today, tomorrow I'm coming back, and there's going to be another one. Enforcement, then, if they pay the ticket, you're fine. If they don't pay the ticket, you have to take them to court. So that's true of all enforcement under zoning. It's true of all enforcement under the health, health code. We're not allowed to use whips and so forth for motivation. We have to go through the legal process. However, there is, we have more enforcement capacity than we did. And between now and next spring, that's what we're going to have. Part of the discussion about the timing of rental regulations was, and Mr. Fox was speaking to this question of enforcement and capacity earlier at the zoning subcommittee meeting, you have to have people in place capable of administering the, the system and capable of enforcing it. So there needs to be enough time to develop what that system is going to consist of, how many people you're going to need to bring it about and force it and make it real, so that when we go to town meeting in the spring, it will be not only a set of regulations, there will be proposals in the operating budget, because you need, even if it's going to pay for itself, if you hope that it will pay for itself, you will have to start it up on the town's dime. So there, there's a sort of a built-in building-the-ship process here. We are going at it as fast as we can, but it will take that amount of time. In the interim, we have the enforcement capacity I described.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
May I follow?
Certainly, Mr. Rosnoy.
Thanks. It appears to me that's quite a diffuse approach to it, Mr. Tucker. And I guess I, I would just recommend that, for implementation of this, that one particular office or individual be identified as the place that this particular program would be coordinated from, and who would be responsible for answering to it. You know, it's staff's job to implement it, but myself, I see a sort of a, a database getting organized and some individual being responsible. I think in order to convince town meeting that this is something that will work, I think a more focused approach would be necessary, to be honest.
If I may. The zoning enforcement officer is the building commissioner. Ultimately, the building commissioner is responsible for all enforcement of the zoning bylaw. The code enforcement agent is, is his principal field person in doing that, but his other building inspectors can do that as well. That's the sort of chain of command for the enforcement of, of zoning. Part of what will be developed as part of the rental regulation system under the general bylaws will be a similar principle, who's, who's responsible for doing this. We have tried, in the last two years, to increase coordination between the various enforcement agents of the town enforcing different aspects of law. Part of what makes this so much fun is you have the police enforcing certain aspects of.
I'm sorry, Mr. Tucker, I'm going to have to cut you off.
Yeah, go ahead.
The, we're, I'm going to just try and bring it back around to a little bit where we started. We're, we're specifically having a public hearing on, on adding this particular provision into the zoning bylaw. The, I agree wholeheartedly that a permitting system is absolutely necessary, but I'm going to have to, because of our time constraints tonight, I got to keep us on topic with this particular zoning amendment. Does it move us forward towards trying to get that, I mean, we're doing things in pieces here. We don't have a permitting system in front of us tonight. In fact, we don't have a draft. So I propose that we sort of try to move forward through what we have in front of us, knowing that it's not enough, but knowing that it's a small step in the right direction. Does anyone have comments or questions about this zoning amendment and how it would function? Okay. Mr. Fox, quickly?
I just have one suggestion, and it may be certainly would be part of permitting, but maybe part of registration. It seems to me that for every rental unit, the landlord should be required to obtain the vehicle registration number and give that to the town, so that enforcement people can go along and look at a house and say, "Wait a second, I can pull up on my iPhone," whatever, whatever he's got, "what cars have registered here, and I see three cars that aren't, and I've seen them there for three weeks." You have then some evidence. So I think you ought to require the landlord to provide, on a current basis, the vehicle registration of all vehicles of people who are leasing in the unit.
Thank you, Mr. Fox, and I, I agree with you. That's, I'm not sure that's possible within the scope of this particular amendment, but I agree with you, and that was, certainly that was brought up before, that registering automobiles and parking is a particular problem. Yes, sir, please come forward.
I am not a resident of Amherst. I am a lawyer who represents a very large number of the landlords of Amherst.
And your name is?
My, my name is Lawrence Farber. My office is here in Amherst. I only wanted to make one comment at this point as to, which seems to me premature. Today, as you've. Today, as you've properly pointed out, it's only on this specific provision of that there would be a request for rental registration. But the actual functionality of how that will be used and worked is, at this point, not before you. The only thing I wanted to suggest is that in the development of how that will work, I would strongly urge, and I am speaking for my clients at this point, to have a committee that would work together with the zoning enforcement officers or, and the code enforcement officers, to figure out ways that this actually works and punishes the ones who are creating problems and not punishes the innocent landlords who are already meeting the requirements and doing what they can to create safe and reasonable housing and try to address the wrongful actions of any of the tenants here. And I just want to urge that there be some sort of an outreach to their input in any committee that is being proposed to address how to implement this situation.
Thank you, Attorney Farber. Ms. Barbarette?
I'm Denise Barbarette. I live at 67 North Whitney Street. And surprise, surprise, I'm actually a renter. So, let's bring a slightly different perspective to things. I do agree with Mr. Crowder that this is not a magic bullet for the situation that we are facing increasingly. But I'm not sure it's the right step to begin with. And I would like to ask the board exactly what you are hoping to accomplish with this. I was looking the other day at the statistics for homeowners and renters in Amherst, and if I'm remembering correctly, I believe the percentage is 55% renters, 45% homeowners in town. It may be flipped, but I don't think it is. But still, it's fairly close. This basically takes you from 18-year-olds, 17- or 18-year-olds who are probably renting for the first time, to 90-year-old renters and probably beyond there, too. I knew at least one 90-year-old renter. I am pretty much squarely in the middle. And I kind of don't like the idea of being lumped in with 18-year-olds who behave badly. It seems to me that what you are going to do by requiring that every single possible place that is going to be rented out, what will happen is that you will acquire an enormous amount of data. And that will also include an awful lot of data on perfectly law-abiding, quiet renters who mind their own business, who are not a problem to anybody and who do not further need the oversight of the town intruding into their lives. So, the question I have is, what is the town going to do with all this particular data? It seems to me that the town already has the data that they need. They know what the problems are, either because the police on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, sometimes on the Sunday nights, are the special invitees to some of the little events that go on. I hear a lot of them on Main Street, coming up the hill to my nice little quiet house, at least quiet at this point in terms of the street that it's on. In terms of visual blight, which is another thing that people are concerned about, trash, lawns not kept up, houses not kept up, tons of cars parked, that's pretty readily visible. So, and a lot of people have commented on how, at this point...
If you could wrap it up, Ms. Barbarette.
Okay. We know what the problems are, and yet the town, with the enforcement tools it already has, cannot seem to get a handle on these things. So, if you have an enormous amount of data, it seems to me that what you're going to be doing is focusing on the enforcement, on the administration of this data and not on really taking a look at the problems that are already well-known and trying to get those under control. So, I would urge the board to think carefully what they're setting up here because it may turn into a very unwieldy monster that really accomplishes nothing.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barbarette. I'm going to display my ignorance of the budgeting process and ask a quick question. Currently, we have the code enforcement officer and we have the building inspector enforcing this. I couldn't help but notice that the town had a big surplus. Is there any reason that we can't have more enforcement officers on board? I mean, who's in charge of asking for such a thing? Mr. Tucker?
Each department is asked to present their budget, proposed next-year budget to the town manager and the finance committee. The surplus this last year was largely 80%, the result of a couple of one-time costs that were avoided. Appropriations the town had made that it did not need to then spend, somewhere in the vicinity of, I think, over $800,000. So, as I said, as we go forward with designing a rental regulation system, we will, part of what we will be doing is looking at what other communities are doing in terms of personnel and enforcement for those and developing a budget for making that system work.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Yes, please, Ms. Kruger.
I guess I would agree with Ms. Barbarette that the data collection isn't really what's driving this particular amendment. I think this is kind of poisoning the bylaw in anticipation of a more rigorous enforcement, permitting, inspection system. And since we've been asked to look at all the things we could do with the zoning bylaw, the part that's kind of under our purview, this was sort of a piece that was anticipating a more rigorous system. And in the meantime, identifying who the property owners are is a basic piece, some of which is already known. So, I don't see it as this massive push towards a lot of data collection. I think it's sort of putting us on notice. But I'm feeling like we're getting all this input on rental registration and Too Little Too Late. And it seems like we're not necessarily the right people to be thinking about this. And either we send an emissary to the select board, staffed by the town manager, or a group of other interested people do because I'm not sure that the urgency that we keep hearing is being communicated to the other departments or the coordinating piece. So, while I really appreciate what people are sharing, I'm frustrated because we have this limited piece that we're taking on, and I'm not sure the rest of town government is aware of what's happening out there.
Thank you, Mr. Kruger. Mr. Schreiber?
And then furthermore, really what we're talking about are new applications. So, really, there won't be a massive database created by, you know, assuming that this passes, the database will be from really the point forward that this is approved and any new applications. So, we don't have the authority to require this of all renters.
Yes, Mr. Bloom. Quickly, please.
Ms. Kruger, I appreciate what you're saying. If you could tell us who we're supposed to contact about what, we would be doing it like double time. I mean, I don't know if you've read these letters about, you know, the six people in Mr. Shane's new house and, you know, the police can't go in because they don't have jurisdiction. The confinement officer can't go in. Public safety don't apparently. But they don't have anybody that does it. We would love, if you could write me an email and tell me who to speak about what, I guarantee you that everyone here would do and would speak to them, not just you. You just seem to be our only recourse, which is why we're besieged.
We don't feel besieged, but thank you for the sentiment. Mr. Tucker?
While, in effect, this will address mostly new applications. It's requiring registration as you go along and permits are being issued and so forth. This also will address situations where, the situation that Mr. Weber described earlier, someone moves out of town, rents their property, and doesn't tell anyone. Something happens there, and for some reason, the town comes in, whether it's the police or the fire department or the health department or whomever, they communicate back to the zoning and inspections folks that this is no longer a home ownership situation. This would apply. This unit, the owner of this unit, would then be in violation of the bylaw until they registered this unit. You know, registration is all that would be required, but...
But it's a change of use.
It's a change of use.
Thank you. That's a good explanation, Mr. Tucker. Yes, Ms. Anderson?
I'd just remind the audience and the board that I'm the planning board representative on the committee that you said doesn't exist. It's called the Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative. And that consists of the health inspector and the code enforcement officer, building commissioner, Mr. Tucker, Christine Brestrop, myself, and I think there was Nate or somebody. Malloy might have been there. I'm not sure, but there were a lot of us. And the charge of that group, they've been doing a lot of work, and that's town staff. I think this is the first time they've had a volunteer come in and be there. And I'm hoping that my role is to communicate what we're hearing every time we do anything with the audience, with, you know, taxpayers who come in here or who write to us or email. And I communicate that back. And I have to say, I was pretty strong about it. I mean, I'm a resident. I have renters in my neighborhood, and it was apparent this weekend that the noise level changed completely. The party hours were not my hours. So, I also have a vested interest in that as well. But they've unfortunately only met, we've only met once in the last four weeks or so. So, that's, but that group is, does exist. And I, it's not a committee. I can't tell you about dropping in it, but you could certainly address anything to... Is her title the health inspector, the health?
The health director.
The health director, if you wanted to communicate.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Ms. Brestrop?
I just might suggest, too, that the select board and the town manager would be interested in hearing this information. And I'm sure they hear it from Jonathan Tucker and they hear it from the building commissioner. But hearing it from the public would be very useful. The select board and the town manager are working for everyone in town, including all of the landlords. And I'm sure they hear a lot from the landlords about the economics of the situation. So, hearing from residents of neighbors, the neighborhoods, might be very useful as well. And we, what should I say? Report to the town manager. So, the more enforcement, the more he hears from the citizens about the need for enforcement and the need for more staff, the more that might actually happen.
Thank you, Ms. Brestrop. I think that's well said. Yes, Mr. O'Keefe?
A question from Ms. Anderson, perhaps. Is it the case that the Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods Working Group is, are we expecting them to be the ones who will bring forward the permitting system? Is that part of their charge? Or is it...
I think that's my understanding. You guys have been going to those meetings longer than I have.
Mr. Tucker?
If I may. The, it is the intent that we do the research and develop the basic form of this. But there really should be a public body that then vets it as it goes forward from sort of an amorphous draft into something more detailed. And by the way, we take notes every time someone says a really good idea, like Mr. Fox's idea about, which occurs in many other communities' regulations about making sure that on the lease there is a requirement to register all your vehicles.
I did.
Very basic.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Ms. Kruger?
Just on the point of urgency, you know, it concerns me that there's been one meeting in four weeks where we hear every time we meet, "Why can't you go faster, Too Little Too Late?" And I wonder if there was more public comment at the select board. I mean, they have a public comment period at every select board meeting. I don't know that it's risen up to their awareness that this needs to be accelerated because the research and the drafting should already be well underway if we're going to do something that involves public comment, landlord participation, and all of that for spring. So, I mean, there's a lot of competing needs. And if we're the only ones who are being made aware of the urgency, then I'm afraid this is going to fall down on the list.
It's hard to think of an issue that's more important to the town right now than student misbehavior, especially after this weekend. And the, you know, getting in hand with the students living in our community rather than the dorms. I mean, we, a lot of the problems that we have are not caused directly by, in my mind, by the fact that students are living in our neighborhoods, but their behavior. So, anyway, that's neither here nor there. I think, given our time constraints, unless we have more to say on this particular amendment, I would suggest that someone make a motion to close a public hearing at this point or continue it, one or the other.
Move to close?
Any further discussion on that? All in favor? That's unanimous. The public hearing is closed. Unless there's further discussion, I suggest we move to an immediate vote on whether to recommend this rental registration requirement amendment to town meeting. Mr. Crowder?
I move that the planning board recommend to town meeting that the article entitled Rental Registration Requirement be adopted.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? That passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone who came for this hearing. And thanks to the planning board staff, everyone. There's really no, there's no bigger issue that we're facing right now, and this is a small piece of what we're trying to do to fix it. We'll move to our next public hearing. We're running a little late tonight. Okay. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law's Chapter 40, Section 5(c), scenic roads, and Chapter 87, Section 3, shade trees, this joint public hearing between the planning board and the tree warden has been duly advertised in the Hampshire Gazette and posted in Town Hall. Proposed driveway construction at 130 Leverett Road, map 3c7. Trees proposed to be removed, pruned or trimmed. Public shade trees potentially impacted by this project include the following: 4-inch hickory, 6-inch hickory, 6-inch hickory, 5-inch hickory, 4-inch hickory, 5-inch hickory. Impacts include removal or root damage. Will the applicant please come forward to present your request?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Rosnoy.
I need to make note that I need to recuse myself from this hearing and deliberation on this due to a potential conflict.
Thank you, Mr. Rosnoy. We'll hear no more from you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Roy Johnson. I represent Mindy Stowle, who's the trustee for Bernie Michaelis, who grew up in the, at 130 Leverett Road, moved to California several years ago and hired me as his agent to sell the property behind his house, which is 5.25 acres. and hired me as his agent to sell the property behind his house, which is 5.25 acres. And so, I'm requesting to put a driveway through there. We've had, I think, five of the board members out to look at it, and there's, I think there were five or six hickory trees that need to be removed, and we'd like to be able to do that, to be able to put a driveway there and a home on the property.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Brestrop?
I just wanted to point out that the board members who went to the site visit became aware that there was something that resembled a stone wall as well, and so you may want to hear about that as well, because this area of stones that may be a wall would be impacted by the driveway.
Mr. Johnson, did you have anything to say about that before?
I think pictures are worth a thousand words, and so I have several pictures here to show the area and the stone wall. Maybe you can pass it around. This is the area. The advantage of doing this is two big dead trees that would be removed at the same time next to the hickories that could create a problem if they fell over on someone driving by or something like that, or a kid playing in the ground. So, I think there's a real advantage to opening up that space. And right now, the stone wall is buried. I mean, nobody saw a stone wall until I think Alan Snow walked up there and found a couple stones. And the builder, I'm sure, will want to uncover that stone wall and make it look like some of the other properties along the road, which look like this. I'd like to see some more pictures. So, this is what it could look like.
Yes, let's pass these around through, to the public after the board has seen them.
Why don't you pile them up now?
Okay. Ms. Brestrop?
I just wanted to add a few facts about the wall. I inquired about whether the wall was on public property or private property. I contacted the surveyor, Randy Isner, who works for Hal Eaton Associates, who's done some surveying out there, and he said that the stones that appear to be a wall are pretty much right on the property line. In his opinion, what is there does not constitute a wall, although over the years, walls have been known to kind of fall down and become covered with debris that is kicked up from the road either during construction or during snow removal. So, if members of the board, well, first of all, I want to say that members of the board have jurisdiction over a stone wall that is within the town right-of-way as part of the Scenic Roads Act. So, you would need to determine whether you wanted to have further investigation about whether there really is a wall there, or whether it's just a bunch of, you know, stones that were thrown there by someone who was plowing the field. If you did want to do that, you might want to conduct another site visit, and it's possible that we could find someone who has some knowledge about old stone walls and could advise you about this. So, that's all up to you. I just wanted to describe to you what the parameters are. There is something that appears to be a stone wall, we're not sure if it is. We think it's on the property line, which would give you jurisdiction over it, and you may choose to investigate this further, or you may not. But, and I guess you would need to determine whether you think, whether you think that there's a wall there or not. And if you did, then you would need to approve the disturbance of the wall so that the driveway could be built.
Thank you, Ms. Brestrop. Mr. Schreiber, before I get to you, I think I'd like to hear from our tree warden, hear his views on this subject. I don't know if you want to come up to the microphone here, if Ms. Brestrop can just pass the mic over to you.
I'm Alan Snow, Tree Warden with the town. I've looked at the trees that are being proposed to be removed. There's one other tree that needs to be added. When I, I missed it with my first measurements, everything that's over, two inches in DBH is what I include. There's a three-inch shagbar hickory that I missed, one extra three-inch shagbar hickory. I think the intent of the Scenic Road Act is to help maintain the scenic character of our communities, to kind of control the way our roads are developed, our scenic byways in town. And I just want the Planning Board to take that in consideration as you go through your deliberations on this project and future projects that impact our scenic roads in town. And you may want to look at the list of scenic roads that we have in town to familiarize yourself with that. I don't have any issues with these trees being removed. There's really no alternative to accessing this particular property, the way it's set up right now. So, unless there's going to be some kind of shared driveway, there's no other way to gain access to this piece of property, so you need to put it in a driveway. What I'd like to do is, you know, if the applicant is agreeable, to follow through with my inch-per-inch replacement value for the trees and to have them agree to do a root zone protection area during construction that will protect the existing trees, vegetation, and soils from being disturbed during construction, and help maintain the scenic character of the road after construction, so.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Mr. Schreiber, did you still have a comment?
Really, I was just going to add regarding stone walls, that I looked at the definition of stone walls in the Scenic Road Act in the Mass. General Law, and it's a very low bar. So, basically, it says something like, "Stones arranged in a linear manner." So, so we might have an image of what a stone wall is, but the actual definition of a stone wall is quite low.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. Yes, Mr. Johnson?
You know, I think in the best interests of a scenic road, I think it would look pretty nice if that wall was uncovered. And so, the next builder, I think, will uncover it, and it will become a beautiful scenic road. But if we don't do something, we can't even see the wall. So, let's have a little common sense. Let's think things through. And I have pictures, we've had five of the committee members out, we've had the tree warden, we've had Christine, Christine out. Rather than delay and have to go back out, what I am suggesting, suggesting to you, is that let's, in a reasonable, fair way, determine that a reasonable builder is going to make that place look beautiful and blend it in with a beautiful scenic road. There are some very small hickories that Alan has taken a look at, and five of the members here have. And I think you should move forward tonight rather than trying to go out and look at it again. That's my request.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anybody from the board who was present at the site visit have a comment? Mr. Schreiber?
I think it'd actually be helpful if the whole board could see your site plans, and so we could see exactly where we're, what we're talking about. And then also, Mr. Snow made reference to shared driveway, you know, what that possibly was.
All we're asking is on Lot 2, we're not looking at Lot 3 and 4 tonight, that is a future lot. This is an A&R lot. Sorry about that. It's a last one, it's not an A&R. We'll go right in the middle. This is, the picture that I took was of this from here to here. You can see almost the entire boundary. So, we'll ask for a driveway to come in through here.
This is the existing?
This is the existing house.
This is, oh, I see, okay.
And so, they're dividing this up. But this has been on the market for many years. And since we put it on the market, Mr. Michaelis has passed away, and his family wants to use the money to fix up the house. It needs a new roof, a new well, a new septic system. This is a family that I think goes back 70 years. And so, that is the goal here, is to try to bring this area back and make it look good, because the house is starting to really look pretty poor. So, if I go around, so if you look at Lot 2, this is where it's coming in here, right where the numbers are. So, here's the building envelope, and the driveway come right here in the middle. And then those are the pictures that I took. That's quite a ver-.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, got to use the mic. Let's hear other comments from the board, anyone? Mr. Schreiber?
So, actually, you just brought up another concern, that really what we're talking about are three lots. So, in other words, I mean, you made the comment, we're talking about Lot 2, but we're not talking about Lots 3 and 4. So, really what we're talking about are three lots that are along a scenic road that, and so, I guess I'm very uncomfortable making any kind of an assessment of this without knowing what the big picture is. In other words, really what, what we'll see next and what we'll see after that. So, in other words, we're really talking about?
We don't know at this point, because nobody's bought those other two, or no one's expressed an interest. And because we're dividing off the .75 acre lot, the lot, called Lot 2, the family asked Randy Isner to divide up the other lots, but we have to go before the zoning board, my understanding is, with those two other flag lots. So, that's why I think we're concentrating, if Christine, give me a little guidance, aren't we concentrating on Lot 2 tonight? Just trying to put a driveway there. Those others might never be developed, we don't know at this point.
Yes, Ms. Brestrop?
The focus of the Scenic Roads public hearing with the tree warden is on Lot 2. The Zoning Board of Appeals will need to look at the flag lots, and normally when there are flag lots abutted to each other like that, they require that there be a common driveway. I can't say for sure that they would require that, but my, my assumption is that they would require that. So, you're probably talking about three driveways, one for the existing house, one for the two flag lots, and one for the frontage lot. Frontage lots are a little bit unusual in the sense that they are sort of allowed by right, and that the only control that the Planning Board has over them is the signing of the A&R plan. But as part of this Scenic Roads hearing, you can certainly, you know, inquire about where other driveways might be in the vicinity and make some conditions about, you know, what you think about the driveway locations. But I just wanted to let you know that the ZBA will have ultimate jurisdiction over the driveways for the flag lots.
Thank you, Ms. Brestrop. Does anyone here from the public to speak for the trees? Yes, if you could have been in your seat for a moment, sir?
Hello. My name is Hope Crolius. I'm the Chair of the Public Shade Tree Committee. Thank you for asking for some comment. I'll keep it very, very brief, because I've invited someone to speak a little bit about the Scenic Roads Act in the bigger sense, or the historic sense. But I just want to say, focusing very narrowly on the interest of the trees, several members of our committee have visited the site, and we would, we hope we're not overstepping the lines by urging that there be, we, urging that there be a common driveway or one driveway to necessitate the loss of as few trees as possible. You know, we always like to think in tree time, not human time, and we're all, most many of us in this room, you know, are just here for a while longer. But the trees, you know, in geological time, in arboreal time, are going to be here a long time, and it's true. You look at these hickories, I think there are a couple maples, they're not that impressive. I mean, they are quite tall, 12 or 15 feet, you know, small diameter, nothing, you wouldn't even notice them. But, fast forward, and they will be at maturity, elements in the ecosystem that will pull out millions of pounds, each of them, over the course of their 80 or 100-year lifetime, you know, millions of pounds, they'll sequester all that carbon dioxide as we try to revive our auto industry, you know, we're selling more cars, we're all, you know, excited about that. In the elections, it's great, and, but that means more stuff that needs to be pulled out, and the trees are really the thing to do it. All that stormwater runoff at maturity, you know, the trees, the tree warden can talk about the specifics, it's easily downloadable on the Internet. But, so we just want to say, don't just look at them as little volunteer saplings, they're important elements of our community. We don't, we just, you know, want to note that and say that if they're going to build a driveway, that's beyond our conversation as a tree people, but that we'd like to hope that all those lots, when developed, could have one common driveway. And I'd like to introduce, for a few brief comments, somebody who was the, if she'd like to comment, the, part of the original group of men and women who had the initiative and creativity to adopt the state Scenic Road Act and turn it into Amherst's very own bylaw. And so, I'd like to turn this over to Barbara Ford.
What's the last name, I'm sorry? Ford? Ms. Ford, the Chair will recognize Ms. Ford, please.
I think that was a bigger buildup, I should have said Barbara Ford, I had a 300 flat of the road. And I was a former member of the Planning Board when this law was adopted, and I was on the subcommittee of, who wrote out which roads were going to be scenic, and we wrote on every road in town, and so on. So, I'm just here to speak for the Scenic Roads Act, and I hope that we, that it comes forward many times, because on my road just now, similar situation happened, and the trees were just taken down. I don't believe there was a hearing, but I'm not sure about that. And so, I think we need a method here in town to make sure that if driveways are being driven into scenic roads, that we take as much care as possible to maintain those, the value of the scenic road, which means trees, and stone walls, which also were impacted on my street. So, and speaking of stone walls, they are rubble walls, but they, that was how they were built, because the farmers were clearing their fields and they did the line, line along the property lines. So, and I think we should try to maintain them as they were and not gentrify them, which is also sometimes happening. But what can you say? So, from what I hear, and I guess you're saying that the, Christine is saying that the, only in the town right-of-way, is that correct? That we only control the town right-of-way?
Yeah, the Scenic Roads Act only controls the trees and stone walls within the town right-of-way.
Yeah. Of course, quite often, one doesn't know where the town right-of-way is, so that's another thing. I mean, you can, you've got the GPS on it, but most people who own the land don't realize that it doesn't, you know, whether something's in the right-of-way or not. So, I'm just urging you to continue having public hearings on these circumstances, and try as best you can to maintain the values that we did have, this was now in the 1970s. So, lots of things have changed, of course, since then, but we're getting more and more building taking place here on outline lots in RO and RLD, so. So, that's, that's my concern.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ford, for coming in, very helpful. Yes, Ms. Kruger?
I have a question, probably from Ms. Brestrop. We've talked about the shared driveway issue, and it seems like that's beyond the scope of what we can do tonight, although I, I like the idea of having all three lots be required to have a shared driveway in minimizing impact and also site, there's access issues and site lines and all kinds of things, and it all makes sense, but it seems like even with the best of intentions, that's not something that would come under our purview under the Scenic Roads Act. Or could it?
Ms. Brestrop?
I believe that, given that this is a frontage lot, an A&R lot, and that you are holding a Scenic Roads public hearing, you're not really dealing with the other lots, that your jurisdiction does not extend to those lots, it just extends to the lot that you're looking at right now. And so, Ms. Kruger is correct that having the discussion about the common driveway, it's a useful discussion to have, but I don't think you have the jurisdiction to require that there be a common driveway at this point. The Zoning Board of Appeals could require that in the future, but I don't believe you can under the Scenic Roads Act.
Thank you, Ms. Brestrop. Yes, Ms. Anderson?
I have a question for the tree warden. From the pictures, it appeared that the trees that are listed here, and in addition to the shag, the shagbar hickory, are small trees, and it looked like they were kind of crowded in there, and I was just asking your opinion, it might be a healthier thing to cull out some of these smaller trees to give everybody a chance to grow. I mean, though they can get big, I happen to own a great big shagbar hickory. It's a dirty tree, but it's a nice tree.
Yes, they are, I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's a field that's regenerating. There are some older sugar maple trees that were along the stone wall that have, they're not, the trunks are still there, but there's no green tops, they're just tall stumps at this point in time. So, the shagbar hickories essentially are there to replace the sugar maples that have died, and they're, they're competing for light, and they're growing nice and straight and tall. They're, they're about 20 feet tall, and some of them are taller. So, they're just doing what, you know, our scenic roads do, is they're filling a void, which will be a loss to the community. They provide a service to the town, and if we, if we do want to take them down, then my feeling is that we should do the inch-per-inch replacement value so that we can plant more trees in other places around town, so.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Mr. Crowder?
I'd like to know what our authority is here. Is this like a yes/no, or can we condition approval, or what?
Ms. Brestrop?
My understanding from talking to Mr. Tucker earlier today is that you can place conditions on this, so that before we really knew what the character of the stone wall was, Mr. Tucker suggested that- a portion of the stone wall with reconstruction of another portion of the stone wall, trying to make, to reveal it to the community. So that would be the type of condition that you could place on your approval that is specifically related to either the trees or the stone wall.
Thank you, Ms. Brestrop. Mr. Crowner.
So, if we approve this, I would like the condition to be, I would like to go beyond the one-for-one replacement. So, so what, part of what is lost is the existing benefit of those trees. And so replacing them one-for-one, I guess, is that one-for-one immediately? So like if you, if you take down a six-inch tree, it's immediately a six-inch tree, or one that will be a six-inch tree within a certain number of years, or, or what? So if it's not immediate, then we're losing some number of years of benefit of that tree. So I would like to have more than, more than one-for-one, one to one and a half, or one to two or something, in order to recoup some, or attempt to recoup some of the loss that we're going to have.
Mr. Snow, can you comment on that?
Sure. So the inch, the idea behind the inch-per-inch replacement is if you have a, if you lose a 20-inch tree, you receive 20 inches of new trees to plant somewhere else or in the same location nearby. It doesn't say that it has to be, you know, it could be, you know, 21-inch whips, it could be, you know, two 10-inch whips, and two-inch whips.
Does, does, does 21-inch whips have the same ecological benefit that a 20-inch tree has?
No, not at the time, but in the future, it has a much greater potential, yeah.
Yes, Mr. O'Keefe.
Another question for Mr. Snow. With the inch-for-inch replacement, would that necessarily happen at this location? And if it would happen at this particular property, is that reasonable, given the availability of space on this property?
I would not want to plant more trees in this particular location. There are other areas relatively close that could use more trees.
So would that be within the set of properties that we're talking about? I mean, I, I, how would you go beyond that set of, how would one go beyond?
What generally happens with the, the funds from this go into the Shade Tree Fund, which is actually managed by the Public Shade Tree Committee.
So it's more of a financial transaction than a...
Correct. And so that money is used to purchase trees to plant around town to maintain our tree canopy in town.
Thank you, Mr. Snow, Mr. O'Keefe. Is there anyone else from the public who was here to speak on this, or Mr. Johnson, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah.
Wait till you get to the mic.
I can appreciate what Hope and the other young lady brought to the table. I worked for a tree department for a couple of years, planting trees, trimming trees, so I have a real appreciation. And I think, you know, we can look to Alan as the expert, but these six trees are within a 12-foot span, that's all that the builder's going to take out, is 12 feet. I think that the town of Amherst is going to be in a much better shape with having, and I heard, I think, 20 trees for each one of those that comes down, put, am I right? Because how many trees for each one that would come down if they were one inch high?
So you have 33 inches of trees, so if you had, you know, if you replaced them with one-inch whips, you'd have 33.
33. So I think the town is going to be much better off planting, you know, up to 33 trees in areas that these trees are going to be healthy, they're going to grow. We have two sugar maples that are dead, that really, if this builder does not take them down, the town should take them down, because they could fall on someone driving by, or a kid, how would you feel? Maybe the Mikeless is responsible for taking them down, but I don't think they have the money to do it. And so here's a way to take a scenic road, make it more beautiful by taking down dead trees. I don't think dead trees really contribute to the scenic road. You're going to get a wall that you can't see now, a wall's going to be established. The builder is ready to go. If he can't do it this fall, I think he's going to walk. And I just think that we should be thinking about making the place look better. You know, I can appreciate what Hope said, but I think we're going to get more trees, Hope. I think that's the goal of the Tree Committee and the Shade Committee, is to make Amherst blossom and bloom all over, not this one place where two sugar maples are dying, and I guarantee you, at least four of those hickories are going to be crowded out, and you're going to get two hickories. So you're going to get two trees out of six anyways.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Yes, Ms. Kruger.
I'm wondering if we could craft some conditions within the scope of our review so that we can come to an agreement. I agree with Mr. Crowner that we want to see a condition for the, whatever the program, the tree replacement, I don't know what the ratio is, and to maybe describe the linear feet of stone rubble wall to be removed, maybe the stones removed to stay on the property for potential future projects. Worried about requiring the wall to be a certain way, because I don't want to gentrify the existing wall and make it look like something it never was, but maybe putting some conditions on. When I was there, I, I respect the value of trees, I don't want to sound disrespectful for trees, but I wasn't impressed that these were super important in the grand scheme of that section of the road, and this is a road I've traveled on a lot, so I'm very sensitive to the scenic road quality of Levitt Road. But I'm more worried about the sightlines, and I wouldn't necessarily want the replanting along this stretch because of other safety concerns with entering and exiting the site. But I didn't have a sense this was a pristine site, or we were taking out the most important growth on the lot. Yes, it was in our jurisdiction on the public side, but there was a lot of growth there. So I'm, I'm okay with the removal of these trees on the list with the addition of the three-inch shag bark, but I'd like, I'd like to, if we could craft some conditions that were, make everyone happy.
I think our conditions are that the trees be replaced with some ratio of replacement, right? And that the stones, I liked your suggestion, the stones from the wall, if it's a wall, remain on the property. Was there anything else, Mr. O'Keefe?
What I was going to suggest is that with respect to the rest of the wall, that it be exposed, but not have anything in there about reconstructing or rebuilding, because I wouldn't want to be in the position of trying to, we're using the term gentrify, or, you know, create something that doesn't already exist there. I'd rather see it in its natural state, or something closer to what was its natural state. Its state right now is basically a berm and not a wall, so.
Technically, its natural state is the stones were underground. We're not going to require that they be reburied, I don't think. But I agree with you, Mr. O'Keefe.
And I would also suggest that the ratio specifically be inch-for-inch. I'm comfortable with the idea of replacing on a one-for-one basis, based on the information that Mr. Snow gave us.
Yes, Mr. Schreiber.
So, just regarding the stone wall, oftentimes there are, and actually, maybe the tree folks can help me, but oftentimes there's a conflict between particularly abandoned stone walls and trees, because especially volunteer trees would tend to grow where those abandoned stone walls are, because they're not mowed, they're not maintained. And so actually looking at these photos, that's, I mean, that's, we're really, by unearthing the trees, we're also doing the potential of root damage to the remaining trees, so I'm not sure exactly how to...
You mean, taking the wall?
Would I, yeah. By unearthing the stone wall, you're also affecting the root system of the trees that would be remaining. So I would think there would be a conflict there of possibly killing the trees to save the wall, or, so I'm not sure, is that, do you have experience?
Mr. Snow?
I mean, it definitely could, could happen, that the trees are, you know, chipmunk planted an acorn in there or something, and so if you start dismantling the wall to fix the wall up, you would impact the trees, so it's, I hadn't, I didn't walk the whole length of the wall along the right-of-way, so.
But you could fix the wall where the driveway is going.
Any further comment? Yes, Mr. Snow.
As we begin deliberating the conditions, I just want to make sure that we include the root zone protection area in those, so. And I will work with the applicant to develop that root zone protection, essentially fencing that's installed to protect and keep equipment out of other areas that don't need to be disturbed in the public right-of-way.
Protecting the root zone. Yes, Ms. Crolius, real quick. If you could, you're going to have to come up to the mic.
I just want to make a comment about the sightlines, and that, you know, we have to again look at it over a time lapse, and talking about protect, making sure sightlines are good usually means removing more trees. So it's, it just, it becomes this process of attrition, where it's taking down six shag bark hickories today, two dead trees, which I must remind the board are valuable wildlife, two wildlife, you know, maybe not scenic value, but they do have a place, they're called snags, and that, then the house gets built, and then you can't see, and then the new owners want really a lawn with an impressive sweep. I mean, it's, it's not just six trees today, and we're not anti-development, we're not anti these people, I feel that those people should have a house that has the money to be fixed up. I'm just trying to point out from that perspective. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am, one final comment. If you could come, you're going to have to come forward to the mic. Let us know who you are.
My name's Nancy Higgins, I live on 558 Main Street, which is not a scenic road, as you all well know, know very well. I had a question for Alan Snow about the value of a hickory tree. How common are hickories in Amherst, and is there any possibility of hickories being, if these trees are cut down, is there any possibility of hickory trees to replace them? Or will they be maple trees, or will they be...
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Mr. Snow?
They probably won't be maple trees, but, because we have too many in our town right now. But I wouldn't be opposed to planting hickories in the appropriate places. Again, it's, again, they're great on a scenic road, but they're not good in a downtown area with sidewalks, or in someplace where the, where the nuts when they drop can become a trepazider or something. So it's, you know, the right tree, right place. So I'm not opposed to planting hickories. And if that, people want to make a condition that certain percentage get replanted as hickories, it's, doesn't make any difference to me, so.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Could we, yes, Mr. Crowner?
So I still think that, that when we have an opportunity to increase the tree inventory by conditioning, removal of trees, mitigation, we should take it. And so, so I, you know, I don't know what the right ratio is, maybe it's 1.1 to 1, maybe that's enough, maybe it's enough to just say a little bit more, but, but I would like to do, I would like to be more than 1.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crowner. Mr. Schreiber.
So I just want to say that I tend to agree with Ms. Crolius about, we don't have enough information, actually, for this, because, you know, we don't have a site plan showing the actual driveway, and there really are clear sight issues. So we have a berm hitting a road that's curving, and, you know, it's basically curving away from where this driveway is. And I actually tend to agree that this could be basically the beachhead, and, you know, more requests, more requests, you know, more wall, more trees. And so I guess I would feel so much more comfortable as, you know, as an architect, actually having a site plan that I could look at, that somebody has actually verified that the clear sight triangle requirements are met, and that, really, that, that we have more than a survey. So I guess we went into this hearing thinking that we were talking about trees, but really we're talking about a wall and trees, and a wall presents some very, you know, some very tricky sight issues.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. Seeing no further hands, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Can I just mention one thing?
Sure, please come forward.
Here's a poor rendering of what's going to happen, and I do have some sightlines, and I think the pictures look pretty good. And then also, you know, I don't know, Mr. Kittredge...
You're going to have to walk around with the microphone, sir, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't usually do this. And I have photos of Mr. Kittredge's property, too. I'm not sure if this is a scenic, if he's... And then I have one picture of the sightline, if it came back. Sorry about this. Maybe it never came back to me. Other photos?
Ms. Kruger.
With all due respect, I think we've been through, we've covered this ground, and it's really speculation about what the builder's going to do, or what, I mean, that's really not before us, and this house, so I would like us to proceed with the information we have.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Someone want to either move to close or continue this public hearing? Mr. Schreiber?
I'm going to move to continue, because I really want to see a site plan, and I think if we have a site plan, we should have another public hearing, or continue, continue the public hearing.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? I'm sorry, Mr. Schreiber, I don't have a second to your motion.
I still love you guys.
Do we have another motion? Ms. Anderson?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? That's, okay, any opposed? We have one opposed. Any abstentions? We have one abstention. Mister Rosnoy.
Does he count as an abstention? He's not here.
Okay, so he's not an abstention, he's not, he's not even here, so never mind that.
The invisible person.
Okay.
You want me to tell him why?
Never had to deal with that situation before. Okay. All right, so what we need, I think, if we're going to set some conditions on this, is that the trees be replaced in a ratio which has still not been decided, that the stones from the alleged wall remain on site, and that the existing wall be exposed, to the extent the tree warden thinks is appropriate, and to protect the root zone of the existing trees from damage to the, the earthworks. Does that sound about right? Ms. Anderson?
Yeah, and it was my understanding that in the beginning, Mr. Snow said that, that the protocol for something like this is that the cumulative number of inches of the tree are in kind given to the Shade Tree Committee to do with as they want, you know, if there's 33 inches of trees, they have 33 inches of two 15-and-a-half inch trees, or 16-and-a-half inch trees, or whatever it is that they do. So, that to me was pretty straightforward, that it's, it's like a credit of banking to go to the, under the oversight of the Shade Tree Committee. So, I would just say in the conditions that it would be as per the tree warden and the Shade Tree Committee has established practice, or whatever it is, with all due respect to my colleague at the end.
Mr. Crowner?
So, what if we cut down all the trees in town? That, that's, you know, that's a loss, that, that just replacing them is, you know, it can never regain. So, you know, I would like, I would like to make it difficult, or painful in some way to remove a tree. You know, you have, you have to give us more if you're, if you're going to take a tree away. So, I'll make a motion. I move according to the conditions that have enlisted, and with a ratio of 1.1 to 1 replacement.
Second. Further discussion? Mr. Snow?
I'm sorry, but I couldn't hear what you said, so could you repeat that, your motion?
The conditions that were listed, there were four conditions, and with the ratio of replacement to be 1.1 to 1, or 1 to 1.1, whatever.
Can I, discussion? Can I, discussion?
Yes, you're part of this hearing, so please.
Do we have two motions?
No.
No.
That was the motion, okay.
So I, this dollar value, this inch per inch replacement value is based on, in my, in my policy, it's $55 per inch. Now, that ends up being, is essentially, if you go into a wholesale tree catalog, for this particular request, is 10, essentially 10 two and a half to three inch caliper sugar maple, red maple trees, is what I based it on. So if we increase the dollar amount.
By 10%.
We would end up with being able to purchase either larger trees, or more smaller trees. So that's one way to do it.
I see, that is a good thing.
Ms. Ford?
I'll support, I'll support this on the basis that we don't have a site plan. So this is kind of my backdoor way of supporting Steve at the same time, because we don't know if they're gonna come back to us and ask for more trees to be cut down or not. It's a distinct possibility if the sightlines and whatnot don't work. So I think, I think that this is appropriate, to be asking for a little bit more upfront.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Any further comment? Do we have a second? If there's no further comment, we'll come to a vote. All in favor of Mr. Crowner's motion? Any opposed? Any abstentions? There was just the one opposed, Ms. Anderson?
It's not a big oppose.
Mr. Johnson, thank you for coming in. We appreciate your time. Thanks to everyone from the Public Shave Committee and the public who came in to talk to us.
Wait, wait, we haven't reached closure on this.
What?
We haven't, have we reached closure?
The motion of the conditions.
Oh, I see, I see, I see. I thought that was for the one.
Well, that's why I asked.
Did you not?
I see, I see.
It was all above plus 1.1.
Okay, I get it.
Did you want to change your vote based on your misunderstanding of the? All right. Okay. I'm gonna go out of order a little bit here. I know why you guys are here. You, sir, in the blue shirt, are you here for something in particular? Okay. Well, I want to get to you if, if so, because we have other business, so. Okay.
Better than a Democratic convention.
Which we're trying to get home to see, so we're gonna try and get this done pretty quickly. We're, Ms. Brestrop?
I was just reminded by Ms. Ford that the planning board will have the opportunity to review the flag lots when they come before the ZBA. So you'll be able to say, make a recommendation about the driveway at that time. Okay?
Thank you.
I can't see the trees for the forest.
Okay, moving right along, we are gonna go out of order and move directly to the site plan review brought by Amherst College. This is item, it's marked as item 2 on our agenda on the back page, but it's not actually number 2. It's number 7. So this is, and we'll, maybe we'll wait for Ms. Krueger to return on this. Ms., Ms. Brestrop?
I just wanted to note that it's number 2 because it's old business. It's still old, old business carried over from the previous page, so it's just B under old business.
Oh, thank you. And if, Amherst Media, we have a little feedback going on in here, if you could try and fix that.
Oh, it's a vacuum cleaner.
Never mind. That is the vacuum cleaner in the hallway.
Okay.
This is, everybody's getting punchy. Come on up. This is the site plan review 2012-0006, M13239, 249 South Pleasant Street, Amherst College. Don't start yet, we'll wait for Ms. Krueger to return. Do we have any committee reports we can get through before?
Yeah, I can, I'll, I'll report that the design review board met last night. We viewed actually, for, well, we reviewed, officially reviewed three applications and an informal review. One for a new Chinese restaurant that's going in where Scandinavians, or Skanda, I can never say that, Hovians, yes. Should be a nice addition to the corner there. Oh dear, see, I've got my notes now. Forgotten the rest of them. Oh, a sign for, there's signage for a new, another new restaurant that is gonna be next door to the new Frogurt Yogurt Place. It's gonna be a Cajun restaurant, it's a franchise, but, and we reviewed signage for that. And then we reviewed what is gonna be happening out back here, just the lighting, the paving, the new generator that's being installed is the improvement to the parking lot in the back here. The generator is a supplement to the one that's at the police station, so on and so forth. So that, you know, we, with all of these, we had no problems whatsoever. Several of these will be coming before the planning board, so you'll get a chance to see them at some point.
Thank you, Ms. Ford.
Yeah.
Anything else?
We informally reviewed a, an application for, Shumway Street is, the applicant wants to take a ranch and turn it into a two-family. There's, it's gonna be a question, once the, once the amendment, the language of the amendment, what constitutes a two-family actually gets approved or not approved, whatever the language is, will determine how, how that project will go through. So we were just offering some informal comments on that at the time. Is that perfect?
Thank you. Mr. Hartman, this is, oh, I was gonna tell you what this is. This is a review of the issue regarding shutters, in accordance with condition number 2 of site plan 2012-6/M13239.
Sure, I don't have any presentation to offer tonight. I believe that the members of the planning board visited the building and saw the building without shutters. We have photographs of the building with shutters, and we're here to listen to your recommendations. And I would just like to put it out there that the college's intent is not to install shutters.
Thank you. Ms. Brestrop?
I just wanted to note that the two members of the planning board attended a site visit, Kathy Ford and Connie Krueger, with a representative of Integrity Builders and viewed the building without shutters. Since then, we've done a little bit of research and have discovered that in 2009, there were no shutters on the front of the building when the aerial photography was taken for mapping the town. There were shutters on the south side of the building at that point. And in addition to that, Tevis Kimball, who is the Special Collections Librarian over at the Jones Library, did find a photograph of the building in 1931, and it had shutters at that time. But of course, the building was actually built in 1830, or somewhere around there, so we don't know whether it had shutters in 1830. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Ms. Brestrop?
Oh, and, oh, excuse me, one more thing. The Historical Commission did take this up informally last night, and they voted unanimously to recommend to the planning board that wood shutters, original, if feasible, be placed on the structure at 249 South Pleasant Street. The commission was critical of vinyl shutters because its material and character does not have the authenticity or integrity of wood shutters. If vinyl shutters are the only option, the commission would recommend that no shutters be reinstalled. And I would like to point out that the Historical Commission is offering these comments informally. They actually have no jurisdiction in this case.
Anything else? Thank you, Ms. Brestrop. Ms. Ford?
So, we agreed, Connie and I, that it actually looks quite appropriate without the shutters. I mean, I, you know, short of seeing a photograph from 1830, I personally think that it fits in quite nicely with the character of many of the buildings along, along the row there. I think a case could be made either way, but it actually looks, especially with the structure of the, the plasters in the front, I think going without shutters would be my recommendation.
If I could just add, I do agree, and I think it, it sort of validated the test of seeing it as it was presented to us originally, and then the work of taking them down. And I, I had an immediate reaction when I drove up, like, ah, I could really see the lines of the facade and the proportions of the house in a different way, and it looked very good to me.
Clean.
Without the shutters, and there's all kinds of issues about adding shutters that we don't have to deal with, since we both, in our opinions, thought it looked better. But just, I think that test, if we want to do it again in a, in a future issue like this, I think it was well worth it.
So, thank you very much for taking the time to check that out. And unless there's any objections from the board, I think that we found that they've satisfied condition number 2, by not, by removing the shutters, that is. Further comment? Thanks very much for coming in. I don't think we need to do anything formally on that, do we? Do we?
Yeah, we have to.
Do we need to move?
I think you might want to vote.
All right. Mr. Schreiber?
My, my only issue are the shutter bolts, they hold up the shutter on the front. Will those be removed?
On the front, I don't think there, there's none now, are there?
Well, there were when we saw, and those should be removed, yeah. Thank you, Steve.
That the hardware be removed?
Yeah.
I'm familiar with that, because my house has the hardware on it. All right, so do we have a motion? Mr. Crowner?
I move that condition 2 be satisfied by the removal of the hardware and removal of the shutters.
Second.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous?
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see over there, Bruce. Any, any opposed? Any abstentions? All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman, Mr. Jessup. Thanks for coming in. Ms. Brestrop, did you have something to say?
Mr. Tucker suggested that you might want to take a break.
Now that we're alone here, I'd like to thank Mr. Rosnoy for bringing chocolate.
There's one last little piece. I didn't take it all.
It's thanks to some visitors from Belgium.
They do it well.
All right. Unless someone needs a break, please raise your hand if you want us to take a five minute break.
In the interest of moving ahead.
All right. We're gonna move directly to the next public hearing, which was scheduled for 8 o'clock.
8 o'clock Central.
In accordance with the provisions of section 5 and 11 of chapter 48, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to the Mass Department of Housing and Community Development, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and Abutting Towns. This hearing is being held for the purpose of providing an opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding these proposed amendments to the Amherst zoning bylaw. These amendments will be on the town meeting warrant for the 2012 annual town meeting. A 0213, Surface Water Supply Protection, to amend section 3.1, Restricted Uses, All Districts, and section 3.24, Watershed Protection, WP District of the zoning bylaw, by adding a requirement that any use of land or related activities located near a public water supply source shall be subject to the provisions of 310 Code of Mass Regulations 22, as amended, and all such Amherst Board of Health regulations as may apply. Here from the zoning subcommittee.
So this amendment would help align our zoning bylaw with, with state regulations as they relate to protection of the public water supply. You'll note that the article is now called Public Water Supply Protection, rather than referencing the DEP as in earlier drafts, because this more clearly indicates what it is about. So we actually added language to cover all sorts of public water supply sources. It simply states that certain sections of state regulation apply, as well as town of Amherst zoning provisions, in areas containing public water supply sources. The language would be added to two places in article 3 of the zoning bylaw, in 3.1, which describes restrictions adhering in all zones, and in section 3.24, which describes our watershed protection district. The effect of not adopting this amendment would be a lack of clarity about restrictions on development near public water supply source sources. It would not mean that those restrictions are, were not in place. So there's really no reason not to adopt this.
Thank you, Mr. Crowner. We don't have any public here today, but we do have.
He came back.
How did you do that? You're very quiet. Are you here to comment on the public water supply regulations? Okay. We have a letter from Cindy Jones expressing her support for this, provided that the watershed protection zoning overlay district be removed. In fact, she's asking that a sunset clause be set for the watershed protection zoning overlay district.
Can I respond to that?
Yes, Mr. Crowner?
So, so we, we talked about that briefly, and the first reaction is, is basically that she has a point. What's, what's in the state regulations is somewhat duplicative of what's in our zoning bylaw. However, it's not necessarily the case that all provisions are the same. If we want to take it away, we should go step by step and look through them in case there's something that we actually want to save. And the second part is that the watershed protection district also consists of a map, which can be whatever the town wants it to be, and does not necessarily have to align with zones 1, 2, and 3, whatever the, the state has. So I think we will, at some point, look at, at paring down the watershed protection zone, but not now.
Thank you, Mr. Crow, for that. I had asked Mr. Tucker a few questions about this, and there's an email that's available to the public, and that you all received in your packets about his response to those questions. Was there any discussion among the board about this? We, I like the change, the red language that's been added since we last saw this. Just for the record, this amendment would read as follows, 3.19, Development Near Public Water Supply Sources. Notwithstanding any other provision of this zoning bylaw, in all zoning districts, any use of land located within zones 1, 2, and 3, there's a misprint there, that should be 3, for a public water supply well, well field, or spring, or within zones A, B, and C of a surface public water supply source, shall be subject to the provisions of 310 CMR 22, including 310 CMR 22.20 and 22.21, as amended, and all such Amherst Board of Health regulations as may apply. And it would amend section 3.24, Watershed Protection District, by adding a new section 3.239 as follows. The following are restricted or prohibited, as the case may be in the WT district, except as part of normal agricultural operations. And that's 3.2439. Any uses of land or related activities specifically restricted or prohibited under 310 CMR 22, including 310 CMR 22.20 and 22.21, as amended, and all such Amherst Board of Health regulations as may apply. Mr. O'Keefe?
I hate to nitpick at stuff like this, but whenever I see what appear to me to be duplicative details, I have to scratch my head a little bit. And so when we, when we're saying, subject to the provisions of 310 CMR 22, including 310 CMR 22.20 and 22.21, it, it makes me wonder a little bit why we choose it makes me wonder a little bit why we choose to include language like that. I'm not a lawyer, but when I read, it says it's subject to the provisions of 310 CMR 22, that to me means it needs to follow that whole section of the state regulations. And I would start wondering what's in 20 and 21, and why we're not calling out 19 and 18 and 23 and 24 specifically. To me, it seems sufficient to refer to the whole section and not to call out individual subsections, and that perhaps even raises some potential vulnerabilities.
Mr. Tucker?
20 and 21 refer specifically to those sections of the larger regulation, which address the regulation of the way land is used within these zones around public water supplies. And since this is a land use regulation, it seemed appropriate to highlight those to the attention of anyone reading this, to draw them to that, and not just the larger. They'll find it if they read the many, many, many pages of the larger regulation, but this targets those regulations which speak to land use.
I'll second that, actually, because I actually went and pulled up this regulation, and it's hundreds of pages long. And to have a little bit of a pinpoint site to 20 and 21 is actually helpful in terms of what the bylaw is intending to get at, because there's a lot of stuff in this regulations that doesn't apply at all to our development near public water supply sources. There's also aquifer protection, there's runoff, there's all sorts of other things that aren't specific to what we're talking about here. So, normally, I would agree with you. I don't like non-exclusive lists, but in this case, I think it's helpful.
Thank you. I'm convinced by that explanation.
Yes, Ms. Ford?
I don't know what a sunset clause is and what Cindy Jones is referring to at the end of her letter. Could somebody explain that to me?
My understanding is that a sunset clause would set a date by which, unless further action is taken by a rulemaking authority, the watershed protection district, in this case, would expire.
Okay. Okay. Is that something we need to address?
Well, according to Mr. Crowder's explanation, that's outside the scope of what we're doing with this, and it should be addressed in more detail and with greater care than we can do in the scope of this amendment. Exactly. Thank you.
But something to be followed up on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. Though, it does seem, there's a tiny, if you look at the zoning bylaw, there's a tiny, or the zoning map, there's a tiny little section of town, really tiny, that's Zone WP now. And if you read the zoning bylaw in more detail, you'll see numerous references to Lawrence Swamp in our water supply protection, when there is in fact no surface water to protect. Those are, according to Mr. Tucker, vestigial references, which could be deleted, but it's not really necessary to do so. Ms. Kruger?
I wonder if Ms. Jones's letter warrants, a short letter in response back, assuming she might not be listening to the tapes or to this show, because I think we did acknowledge that there was a point in to be pursued under a more comprehensive look at the watershed protection zone. So, you know, not to make more work, but maybe a short letter from the chair just saying that these points appreciated her letter, and that is going to be considered and further review. I just wonder when people spend the time to write, put that much time in, and then maybe they don't hear from us, and they think...
I'd be happy to write that letter unless somebody's opposed to me doing it. Do you want to see it before it goes out, or...? Ms. Brestrop?
Maybe we have a copy through our files?
Absolutely. Yeah, I would copy everyone on, of course. I try to do everything for the record, Ms. Brestrop. Okay. Do we have, where are we here? Oh, we need to close the public hearing.
Still moved?
Second. All in favor?
I lost that.
I move she seconded it. Ms. Ford?
Were there any opposed or abstaining? That passed unanimously to close the public hearing. Any further discussion on this? Mr. Tucker?
I would just note for your information that when this comes up, rather than when, than if it comes up, that it is the case that the watershed protection district, as it currently stands, is in many ways vestigial, and its map extent does not correspond to these. So, by adopting these, we are in effect creating larger, we are reinforcing in zoning existing zones that are much larger, that are already regulated under state law, and must be regulated in order for us to get permits to operate our public water supplies. Part of the goal of going through the process of looking at all that more carefully, and then deciding whether or not to keep the watershed protection district, or to do something different, would involve looking at all of that. The principal purpose of this initially was to be supportive of and to operate in parallel with Board of Health regulations that are being developed for this same purpose. It was so that we don't have nothing in the zoning bylaw while we've got Board of Health regulations over here regulating land uses in association with our public water supply. It sort of corresponds. It does not address all of those vestigial issues, and it doesn't do that on purpose, because it would take a lot of time and work and effort and reconsideration of the district to do that. What it does is create that supportive framework.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Mr. O'Keefe?
When we get to town meeting, someone will almost certainly ask to see a map of Zones 1, 2, and 3 around the public water supply, and Zones A, B, and C around surface public water supplies. And it would probably be helpful if we could have that map be part of our planning board report, so that people can see it in advance.
Get those from Public Works or from DEP.
Thank you.
And anything else? I agree with you, by the way. All right, we need another motion here. Mr. Crowder?
I move that the planning board recommend to town meeting that it adopt the article entitled Public Water Supply Protection.
Mr. Carson? Any further discussion? All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you, everyone. All right. I'm going to jump off topic for a second. What happened to our book and plow that was on the wall up there?
If I may, that was taken down while some work was being done on the PA system. It's still around. It'll go back up.
Just checking.
It's whoever gets the eagle eye award.
Wow. That could be the report of the chair.
Charity, have time to even look over there.
I can do many things, Mr. Schreiber. The next thing on our agenda is another public hearing.
Another republic.
This is the Planning Board Rules and Regulations Amendment. In accordance with the provisions of Section 11.223 of the Amherst zoning bylaw, as enabled under Chapter 48 of the Mass General Laws, these public hearings have been duly advertised, and notice thereof has been posted. These hearings are being held for the purpose of providing an opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding these proposed amendments to the Amherst Planning Board's Rules and Regulations. PBR 1-13, Amendments to Article 2, Seeking to Clarify Submission Requirements. And this is to see if the planning board will amend Article 2, Section 3, Subsection B, Site Plan Review Submittals of the Amherst Planning Board Rules and Regulations, to add requirements for submittals associated with multi-unit residential rental applications as follows. And this will be, Site Plan Review Submittals shall include, and I'm going to jump ahead to the Site Management Plan, which is Section 5, that the submittal include, K, Grounds Management, including a schedule of mowing, snow removal, and care of landscaping, including care for trees, plantings, and gardens; M, Building Maintenance, including projected schedules for repainting, repairs, and related upkeep, and replacement schedules for site furnishings; N, For Any Multi-Unit Residential Rental Use, Submittal of the following. I, A Proposed Lease, Including Appropriate Provisions, Ensuring Compliance with All Applicable State and Local Housing and Public Health and Safety Regulations; Double I, Emergency Notification Information, that should be three I's, Registration of All Existing Residential Dwelling Units in accordance with the Rental Property Registration Regulations of the Town of Amherst. That's it. This is something that we brought up, not through the zoning subcommittee, but through the full board, to try and see if we can clarify our site plan review submittals, or just add a little bit to them specifically. It came up around the rental regulations. I see that there's since been a few additional things that the staff would like to have in there, I assume, that would make their job easier, that they always have to ask people for. So, does anyone on the board have any comments? Mr. Carson?
Just a reminder, too, remember, and when it says for any multi-unit residential rental use, but this is all for multi-unit, isn't it?
No, Site Management Plan section addresses everything, from shopping centers, to barber shops, to restaurants, to multi-unit residential uses. That's why that is explicitly singled out and listed.
At the top, it says, the amendment says multi-unit residential rental applications.
The amendments all affect those.
It affects that, too. Okay.
I think, you know, I think that's maybe just, I see your point, Mr. Carson. And I think that if you scratch out with, associated with multi-unit residential rental applications, it makes sense, because actually, these things apply to more than that. I think the error is with the caption, not with the language of the rules. Ms. Kruger?
I had kind of a question. On N3, where we have in capitals Rental Property Registration Regulations, it implies that that's the name of a specific regulation or system. And since we don't know what it's going to be called, or what it is, maybe it shouldn't be in caps.
I would, yeah, I would take out the word registration and put the rest of it in lowercase. Rental Property Regulations.
I agree with that. I would also, if I can jump in for a second, take out the word existing.
That's right.
Because actually, what we're talking about is proposed.
Yes. Well, actually, we're talking about existing, because we can't, we can't ask for something that's proposed. So, we have to ask for what, we can only go to battle with the registration we have.
If I may...
The meaning's the same, even if you read it without existing, it's still...
Mr. Tucker?
If I may, actually, this is intended, this is what we're asking people, the information we're asking them to give us about proposed uses. So, in many cases, they would be new. In some cases, they would be both existing and new. So, it's, taking the word existing out covers the ground.
Mr. O'Keefe?
So, two things on that. One, on what we're going to call it, I would suggest that the language that we use is the Applicable Rental Regulations, which is the language that we just approved for the amendment for rental registration, just to be consistent. But I'm still not entirely sure how the applicant would be able to submit to the board as part of their site plan review application, evidence of registering units that haven't yet been approved. It's kind of a chicken and egg thing, isn't it? So, if they're applying for a permit to build a converted dwelling with six units in it that they're going to rent, they would probably not have registered those units yet, because they don't exist, right?
That's correct.
However, in the future, we may have an applicable permitting system that requires a permit be in place before building such a thing. So, if we say applicable, then the fact that it doesn't exist means that it's not applicable.
Okay.
And it sounds good. Does that make sense?
Although in Amherst, whether or not it exists, it might be applicable anyway.
So, that would read, then, as I'm understanding, it would read, item three would read, first of all, it would be III, and then it would say Registration of All Rental Residential Dwelling Units in accordance with the Applicable Rental Regulations of the Town of Amherst. That work for everyone?
Small Rs.
With small Rs. Thank you, yes. Small rental, small regulations. So far, but we'll make them capitals. Anything else? And, oh, and the change to the caption, eliminating the words, "Associated with Multi-Unit Residential Rental Applications."
Well, that's, that's the caption. It doesn't make it into the subsequent language.
No, but it makes it into the report that goes out and that voters see.
Nobody's going to vote on this.
True enough. True enough. So, that's not a change. Ms. Kruger?
Mr. Chair, you reminded me of something that I had wanted to bring up. As we do the reports to town meeting, I think, from past experience, recent past, it'd be really helpful if either the board or the chair could review the reports to town meeting before they go out. I don't know if that's the current practice.
I think that's a great idea.
That's the practice we adopted last time, and that is the practice going forward.
Yeah, I spent an inordinate amount of time on this last year, as did Mr. Tucker. So, I think where we're at with this Rules and Regulations, though, is that we need a motion.
If I may? I just have one more question. I know we've talked about the language for the lease, and kind of parsed out where we wanted to be. My question is just the way that that sentence ends. It says, the lease is supposed to ensure compliance with all applicable state and local housing and public health and safety regulations. And I can't remember exactly discussing that language, but that seems kind of broad to me. Like, a lease that addressed all applicable state and local housing and public health and safety regulations, it might not actually exist, because there are a lot of them.
What we really want is one that doesn't allow lawn couches.
Right. But I know that we did try to broaden the language, so that it wasn't specifically referring to lawn couches, though. So, that might have been the agreed result. I just can't remember.
It might help if the word "all" came out of it.
With applicable state and local...
I think what we were missing before was any reference to them providing a lease whatsoever, correct?
Yeah.
Can you say, Bertman?
Sure.
Yes, Ms. Kruger?
If I might, we talked about this, I can't remember now if it was at the last prior zoning subcommittee or here, but the details of what would go into a lease, or a model lease, or guidelines for a lease, might appear in some, I don't know if it would appear here, but I don't think it's really about compliance with laws. It's things that'll, you know, give landlords the power to terminate a lease, or evict tenants if there's certain violations. And that's not exactly, I'm not sure that that's what, where's the lease section? What number am I looking for?
It's N triple I.
Oh, okay.
Or N generally. It's N I, single I.
Okay. A Proposed Lease, Including Appropriate, Ensuring Compliance with All Applicable State and Local Housing and Public Health and Safety Regulations. Is that really what we're looking for when we review the lease?
It's one of the things. I don't think that, I mean, there are certainly provisions you will probably... I don't think that, I mean, there are certainly provisions you will probably look for that don't fall under that aegis. But until we have a way of identifying what those are, until we have a model lease in hand, this seemed the best way to go forward. This captured most of what was.
All right. I'm going to jump in for a second. I think that what, if I'm reading staff correctly, we always want to get a lease for any rental use, right? Whether it's commercial or residential, whether it's multi-unit or single unit, we always want to see a lease.
We just want to see the lease.
Right? So, I think that this gets its own letter that says, well, it's between M and N, or after there, whatever you want to call, whatever letter it is, that just says, a proposed lease for all rental uses. For all rental uses, a proposed lease. And then, the multi-unit residential reuse consists of items two, double I and triple I. What about that?
I don't even think it should be proposed lease. I think it should be the lease. You know, a copy of the lease, like proposed lease, it might not be the lease.
What if it hasn't been executed, and there's a negotiation between the lease, the owner and the lessee, that's maybe a detail we don't care about, but it's not literally the executed lease?
Some applicable laws.
Well, I'm not looking for a signed lease.
There's no way that a commercial lease doesn't change based on negotiations, so I think.
Well, we could ask that the final lease be filed with.
Yeah, and that would be a condition of the permit, as opposed to a submittal requirement.
So, the submittal requirement would be the proposed, I think. For all rental uses, comma, a proposed lease.
Including appropriate provisions, period. Does that make sense?
Do we have to add that on there?
I don't think so.
Ms. Brestrop?
I think you're not absolutely sure of what you want someone to include in the lease. You haven't really had that discussion yet. Ms. Kruger provided you with some sample leases, and it's probably a good idea if you have that discussion at some future meeting, but you don't know exactly what you want to include in the lease. So, I don't think I would include that last phrase.
Including a proposed lease.
Yes.
Proposed lease for all rental uses.
So, if I can read through this again in the way that I think this should read, and I'm not hearing any big opposition to it, it would be, after item M on this list under section five, it would be, section five N would be, for any rental use, comma, a proposed lease. Then O would read, item two is emergent, or item two would become item one, emergency notification information, item double I would be, registration of all rental residential dwelling units in accordance with the applicable rental regulations of the Town of Amherst. And then, the last item would be item P.
But you left out the phrase, for any multi-unit residential, that should be the O.
I skipped that, yes.
That should be the O, and then little I, and little I.
Right. Thank you.
Can you repeat this? I think it is important to have the word residential in there, because there are a lot of other rental things that you review. Someone might rent a space down on University Drive to have an athletic club, or something like that.
Oh, yeah.
And you don't care about that lease.
Right, so.
You're interested in the residential leases, right?
Only for the items double I and triple I, though.
They do want to see a lease.
We want to see leases for commercial leases.
Do you really?
Yeah. Well, don't you?
All right. So, can you read these over again? I'm sorry for.
Okay, so.
N becomes, for all rental uses, a proposed lease.
And N becomes, for, yes, for any rental use, comma, a proposed lease. O reads, for any multi-unit residential rental use, submittal of the following. I, emergency notification information, double I, registration of all rental residential dwelling units in accordance with the applicable rental regulations of the Town of Amherst.
Question?
Yes.
Has the porch sofas gotten lost in the sauce here?
We cover it with a condition. It remains unwritten.
It's interesting, since that was.
That was the whole reason.
Yeah. That's what I was just going to point out. So, my original motivation in bringing this forward was to try to avoid springing something on applicants at the last minute when they come before us. So, here, they've submitted their application, and we're saying, oh, but you didn't give us a lease, even though they're not required to. So, now, we're saying they need to give us a lease. So, I just want us to understand that we're not requiring them to submit a lease that says that you can't have any couches on your porch. And so, if we're going to say, yeah, you gave us a lease, but it doesn't say you can't have couches on your porch, that we need to understand that we're not requiring them to say that in the lease.
Okay. Before I hear from staff, I'm going to say that staff has told me we can't do that. We can do it anyway, and if it fails to survive whatever legal challenge someone chooses to bring to our law sofa planning board rule, then they can sue us. But, I mean, to me, we put it in there.
As a condition, as opposed to a submittal requirement?
Yeah, or either one. It's fine with me either way. Ms. Ford?
Isn't, it is a health department regulation, you can't have sofas on the lawn. Isn't that correct?
Mr. Tucker?
Under the state sanitary code, the health department has, in the last couple of semesters, been sending out letters to all campus-related residential properties of which they were aware, saying, this is a violation of state law, don't do it, because we'll come ticket you and make you take it away.
So, why can't we reference that state law? I mean, isn't that, wasn't that what you were trying to do here? Can't we just specifically reference that law?
If I may, part of the intent here is to keep this broad enough so that you can capture whatever specificity you want in it. Part of the Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative is looking at model leases and things like that, so that we can bring you model leases that you would, as part of the permit process, that you would use to look at, rather than trying to spell out all of the details of that in here, because there are always going to be new things. Do you want to be coming back every four weeks to try and add something you didn't think of before? Create a generalized rubric, and then the details flow as we identify them.
Well, you know, Ms. Brestrop, I'm really concerned that this worked for staff.
I believe that Ms. Federman said, when she was here, that there is no specific prohibition against having upholstered furniture outside. She refers back to a safety code that's related to fire, and other issues that she can control when she tells people they can't have sofas on their lawns, but there's nothing in the state regulations that says that. So, there wouldn't be a specific rule to refer to. That's my understanding. The second thing is that when staff becomes aware that the planning board or the zoning board of appeals is particularly interested in a topic, we usually look for that in the application. So, now that we know that you're very, you know, focused on this issue, when a lease comes in as part of an application, we would look at the lease, and we would, you know, write to you in your report that we write, if they didn't refer to no sofas, and we would hand that to the applicant. And then, hopefully, the applicant would actually come to the public hearing with a new revised lease that would include a prohibition on sofas.
So, what is telling the applicant not to put in their lease, no sofas? Where are they getting the information that that's something that they shouldn't, that they should be including in the lease?
We would tell them that, among other things.
Staff, that's part of the vetting process.
Well, I mean, is there, I'm with you on this. I mean, let's replay, let's add that section in, for any rental use that we had, a proposed lease, but then, what we could do is, under the, this new section O, a proposed lease including a provision that no upholstered furniture be put on the lawn or other outdoor areas. Mr. Schreiber?
I hope we don't do that, because we're just cherry picking one issue out of many, many issues. I mean, I want to see one that says no noise after ten.
Yeah.
Bring in your trash cans. Yeah. In other words, there's so many of these that.
Ms. Kruger?
I'm not sure I want to see the commercial leases. I'm not sure. I mean, that's a really big piece of work. And are we really saying we want to see the contract rents, and the agreements that people come to around what different tenants and leases are going to pay? Or is it more the other parts of a residential lease that we're interested in? Because I can see on the commercial leases, getting into monetary issues that we might not want to put in the public realm.
Maybe you're right.
I think the management plan might cover everything that we would be interested, and we don't really care how much they're paying per square foot, but what are they doing, their trash, their snow, their sidewalks, their bike racks, that sort of thing. Maybe, as a person on that Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods Committee that is at meeting, that when someone comes in and is going to have a, before they get hit with their no upholstered furniture, maybe there'll be a sample lease that is, that is like, here's a lease that it compare, that contains components that we think are important, and any, you know, and they can go away with, oh, here's a form that says number of cars, whatever it is that's on there.
Mr. Schreiber?
So, Sandy, I think you hit it right on the head, that I don't think we care about those provisions in the lease between the, in any case, residential or commercial. So, in other words, I don't really care who is in charge of making sure there's no lawn sofas. Ultimately, it's the owner's responsibility. So, the owner should be presenting with us a management plan for how there'll be no lawn sofas. And how, whether that's the tenant's responsibility or the owner's, that's up to them.
Or the property manager.
So.
Yes, Ms. Ford?
So, we're going to be bringing that up with every application, because there's not going to be any place written anywhere that tells these people that that's one of the things that we're, I mean, it's just, it's just going to come through, kind of inform, inform, there's nothing going to be written down anywhere that, that this is something that, like, we ask for a site plan when we're doing a site plan review. I just, I just want to be clear about this.
Mr. Rosnoy?
Yeah, I have to agree with Ms. Ford, and I have to disagree with Mr. Schreiber. Stephen, we are actually asking for the management plan to include noise, odor, and dust mitigation measures, and a whole lot of other things.
Right.
And so, if there's one more specific issue that has come before us, that has been an issue, I think it's fair to include it in. And I entirely agree that if we don't tell an applicant that they have to do this, then staff really has no ground to stand on when they're talking to them. And they can come before us and say, well, it doesn't say anywhere that we have to do this. Why should we have to do this?
So, what were those other issues?
I think we ought to just say it, even if it's just as blank as saying outdoor upholstered furniture.
So, I think my particular objection, I'm sorry.
Please, go ahead.
My particular objection was to include that in the lease, but to include that in the management plan, I think is actually a different story.
Yeah, I understand, if I may. I understand that distinction, but I think this is something that is the responsibility of the tenant, not the responsibility of the management company.
It's very possible that the owner provides the lawn furniture. In other words, some people rent furnished apartments. So, we, in other words, we don't actually know where the furniture is being generated, so.
Could be a distinction.
Fully furnished with lawn furniture.
I stand by putting it in the lease.
I think this, I mean, for me, and the reason why I sort of have tried and been proponent of putting that in there, the lawn sofa piece, is because, one, I think Ms. Ford is right, it provides prospective notice to landlords that they need to put this in there. Two, it's going to put it on something that the tenants sign, that says they're not going to do it. Not a management plan signed by the landlord, but something signed by the tenants. And, you know, three, it fits our bigger fall theme of trying to do our little pieces of what we can here and there, to try and start to make a dent in this problem the town's having with absentee landlords and badly behaved tenants. So, I can't see the harm of putting it in there. I can't see how it harms anyone to require that it be in the lease. Mr. Crowner?
I agree that it should be in the lease, but I think the lease is the responsibility of Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative. So, if you're going to rent a property, you're going to get a copy of the lease, and this is what has to be in the lease. And we shouldn't say what should be in the lease. Somebody else is doing that, so let's just let them do it. Because there are other things that I think are important, like the quiet hours and vehicles.
And there's other things in the lease that I think that that, people on that other committee want to see that we don't particularly care about. Well, we do, but we don't.
So, what about the management plan?
So, I think the management plan includes a lease. The lease.
I see.
Includes these provisions, but they get what needs to be in the lease from somebody else.
They get a boilerplate from, at the time of application.
So, it's tied into our new permitting system? Mr. Schreiber?
So, the management plan includes something where, for example, where trash will be stored. So, like, will be stored in the shed. The lease might also include that. It's the tenant's responsibility to bring it behind the shed. We don't have any, absolutely zero authority to enforce a lease. We have absolute authority to, I mean, well, we don't, but the zoning enforcement officer has absolute authority to enforce a management plan.
So, can we name this item in the management plan?
Put it into the management plan section?
Yeah.
Sure.
I mean, we're, I mean, there's, there's going to be double referencing things on the management plan that are also going to be in the lease as well, right? That's, that kind of, it goes hand in hand.
Ms. Brestrop?
How about putting it under grounds maintenance? Okay? Because it is an issue related to grounds maintenance.
Item K, grounds management, including a schedule of mowing, snow removal, and care of landscaping, including care for trees, plantings, and gardens, comma.
And lawn furniture.
And lawn furniture.
And excluding lawn furniture, excluding.
It could equally go under J, onsite recreational facilities, comma, and all site furniture. Exterior site furniture.
How about indoor/outdoor seats for patrons, including seasonal outdoor dining?
None of that tells you what function is, which is to not have them.
The point is, though, you're asking for the information. Where's the exterior seating going to be? That gives you the opportunity to raise that question.
Mr. O'Keefe?
To me, that seems sort of permissive, rather than restrictive.
Yeah.
It doesn't really seem to set the right tone.
But none of the site management plan elements are restrictive. They are asking for specific kinds of information. What you're, what you're seeking to do is, under the lease, say, don't do this, that, and those, and the other thing. Including, including, by the way, the, the fact that exterior upholstered furniture is a, you know, attractant to vermin and so forth. It's not just a fire issue, although it is.
Right. So, if I may, I think our point is that we don't want to allow it, and so, requiring the applicant to submit a plan for how they're going to manage the thing that we don't want to allow them to have.
It's really not a good idea.
Exterior site furniture, there's all kinds of furniture that you can have out there, lawn furniture and so forth, you know, plastic, molded vinyl seating and so forth, that is not a problem. The problem is the furniture that's designed for the interior, that's upholstered, that gets stuck out on the lawn.
But they're not going, I agree with Jonathan that, you know, if, they're not going to, they're not going to say that they're putting out upholstered furniture. I'm just kind of at a loss here, because it seems like this whole thing was designed to hit this issue, and we haven't, we haven't, we haven't addressed this issue.
I'm going to make a suggestion at this point, that we continue, that someone move to continue this public hearing. It's too late, and we're not getting anywhere with this.
Yeah. Sleep on it.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
Seconded.
To where, to when?
To our next meeting.
To September 19. Do we have to say a time?
No.
It'll be posted.
Is this time to think?
All right. We have a motion, it's been seconded, to continue this public hearing till our next meeting, which the date, certain has been set.
Seconded.
And moved and seconded. Who seconded? Ms. Anderson. Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? Abstaining? The, this public hearing is continued. Okay. Thank you, everyone. That's all our public hearings.
Did we learn anything from this today?
If we've learned anything from this today, it's that four is too many.
Four is too many.
New, let's see, we've got through that. Any topics not reasonably anticipated? I think we do have one. I think we've got to do elections at some point, but I don't know if it's too late to try and do that tonight. Elections for what? For us.
The.
Adventure.
Open season, Ms. Kruger, I mean, I'm sorry, Ms., what's your name?
We're talking about elections?
Yeah.
And there had been an email from one of the board members about that, and I suggested putting it on the agenda for the 19th. Is that appropriate? Do you agree with that?
Yep.
Okay.
But not all of us will be here on the 19th.
Not all of you will be here.
No.
Oh, we're all here.
Better watch out, you'll get nominated.
But what would restrict us just from doing the elections right now, or the restructuring right now?
I think Mr. Tucker had said that it needs to be an item on the agenda, and I forgot to put it on today's agenda. I apologize for that.
Just for clarity, why would it need to be on the agenda? Because it's.
So that the members of the public would know and be able to attend.
All right, let's have, let's have an informal discussion about it right now, so the members who won't be here in two weeks can weigh in.
What are the officers that we're voting?
Ms. Ford.
What are the officers that we're voting for?
The officers that are voting for, we have a chair, a vice chair, and a clerk, if I'm not mistaken.
And who is the vice chair and the clerk right now?
Mr. O'Keefe is the vice chair, and Mr. Carson is the clerk.
Okay.
Mr. O'Keefe.
Ms. Anderson.
Ms. Anderson.
Hand up first.
I think everybody is doing an excellent job. I won't be here on the 19th, and my two cents would be that I would strongly encourage everybody to stay put, particularly our chair, I think, to do an excellent job. So that would be my thinking.
Back up. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Mr. O'Keefe.
Ditto. I agree.
I'm.
Okay.
I'm in agreement.
You would accept.
So we also do board restructurings of committees. So should we talk about that?
Sure. Please, won't you lead us?
Okay. I'm the PVPC rep, which requires a board vote. I'd be happy to continue doing that if the board so chooses.
Any objections to that?
And I'm the Community Preservation Act Committee rep, and I'd be happy to continue that if the board could put it all into one package.
Did you say, did you say CPAC?
CPAC, yes.
We have Agricultural Commission, that's me. I'm making about every other meeting at this point, but I'm happy to keep doing it.
Keep the farmers' markets coming.
Yeah, yeah, they're multiplying. It's great. Transportation Plan Task Force.
May I just question this? Are you having this informal discussion so that on the 19th you can actually vote?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you.
That way someone doesn't get nominated who isn't here for some meeting.
Yeah, like has happened occasionally.
Regarding transportation, I'm happy to keep serving. I presume Sandra is also, but not much has been happening. Perhaps between now and next meeting, we can figure out what's happening there.
It looks great on paper, but we don't do anything at the moment.
I'm happy to keep going with Design Review Board.
Great.
We need more, though, right, Chris?
One more member.
Yeah. Anybody here is interested?
From this group? No.
No, from any.
I mean, it could be from anywhere else, but it could be from this group, right? If somebody wanted to?
I'll have to think about the categories. There are certain categories that have to be fulfilled, so.
Oh, okay.
If anyone watching at home is interested in participating in the Design Review Board, there's an opening, please talk to Chris Brestrop at the Planning Department if you're Redevelopment Authority.
I'm happy to continue, but they have seemed to go into a real dormant phase right now.
Housing and Sheltering Committee.
It's me, and I'm happy to continue if people want me to, and I don't know for a time, but I did have a little bit of an update.
Sure, why don't you give us our update?
If you recall, the Planning Board had said they wanted me to ask the Housing and Sheltering Committee if they would have a joint meeting with the consultant, Karen Sonnenberg, who they've selected to work on the housing plan, which was at one point going to include a market study, but the market study piece, she wasn't selected for that, she was selected for the Housing Production Plan update. So I went to their meeting a week ago and said that the Planning Board wanted to have a joint meeting so that a lot of people who've been coming to our meetings could participate. What they, they thought that was fine, but what they wanted to do was to have a first meeting with just their committee. Not that we couldn't go to their open meetings, but they want, they meet at 9:30 in the morning. And I thought, we would rather have them come and do something joint at a Planning Board meeting when people who could come after work could participate. So they said the second meeting with the consultant would be a joint meeting with us, and it's not, a date hasn't been picked. They did pick September 13th at 9:30 for their startup meeting with their consultant, but that wouldn't be a joint meeting with us that we would be co-hosting. You had sent out an email about that, did I get that date wrong?
Ms. Brestrop.
I got the impression from talking to Nate Malloy, who's the staff person for that committee, that they were seeking some Planning Board members to come to a meeting on Thursday, September 13th at 11:00. It doesn't have to be all the Planning Board members, but they thought that some of you may be interested in coming. And I wasn't entirely sure what the agenda for that meeting was going to be.
That was their startup meeting with their consultant, and they wanted to talk about the scope and some other stuff, but certainly Planning Board members, but that's not this combined meeting that people from the neighborhoods seem to be asking us to jointly sponsor.
So that's September the 13th at 11 o'clock a.m., meeting space to be specified for the Housing and Sheltering Committee. All Planning Board members welcome to attend. Ms. Brestrop.
And may I ask, if you are planning to attend, will you let me know more than 48 hours in advance so I can post it as a Planning Board meeting? If more than two of you show up, I think we need to, is that right? No, more, I'm not sure. But anyway, if more than one of you show up, it's probably good for me to post it.
Okay, so duly noted. Please let Ms. Brestrop know 48 hours in advance if you're going to be attending. Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods.
Oh, just getting started, I love it.
We look forward to your reports.
Good question, David.
Yes, Mr. Carson.
I think picking up on what Connie said, the urgency we're hearing from people about what's going on with the board. Sandy, do you have any sense of when they're ready for public hearings? I think that people are desperately wanting to talk to them, and.
I just attended one meeting, and it was, I'd say, three or four weeks ago now, and there have been two or three meetings that have been canceled. The one tomorrow was canceled. I get emails from Chris, maybe she has a, more of a sense than I do.
I suspect that August was a difficult month for people because of vacations.
Vacations, that's right.
And so those meetings were canceled. The one tomorrow was canceled, which I'm not sure why that was the case. Ms. Fetterman, Julie Fetterman, is the person who's spearheading this effort, so I can try to, you know, get some information from her. And she did say, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, when she suggested canceling the meeting, that we could go ahead with it. I unfortunately was on vacation that day, so there was no one really to run it. But, you know, we will certainly start up again soon. I think that there is a lot of momentum, there was a lot of momentum shown in the last meeting that Sandy attended, so unfortunately, you know, people have gone on vacation over the last few weeks.
I'm just wondering if it's time for them to start allowing the public in with their meetings, because I really sense that all the work we're doing with our articles, they could all be defeated at town meeting, because there still is this feeling that people don't fully understand what's going on, that they don't understand why we're not giving them answers. I mean, I agree with you, Connie, there's a lot of frustration, and I don't know what else we can do except let those people know where they can go and be heard, and where they're going to have an influence in what's happening.
Ms. Brestrop.
Right now, it's kind of an odd situation, because this is a staff, staff group, it's not a public group. It's not a group of citizen volunteers, which would normally be a public meeting. Staff meetings aren't necessarily public, and Sandy has joined us now, so it's a sort of a quasi-group that's, you know, not fish nor fowl. So inviting the public to the meetings, at this point, I don't necessarily think would be appropriate, but certainly that should happen at some point, and maybe there's another group that should be formed that would work in parallel with this group. I'm not exactly sure. I will talk to Julie about that.
Can we talk about this our next meeting? Because I really think that something's.
I won't be here, unfortunately, at the next meeting.
I won't either.
Yeah, I'm not here. I will tell you that when I came there, I was kind of full of vim and vigor. I think they all kind of sat back, because I explained the frustration of our board, no matter what it is that we're talking about, the public comes in and is begging, crying, pleading with us to do something about uncontrolled rentals and everything that we've heard. And this group has got a lot of potential, it's got all the right people in it, people who, you know, as I said before, I wanted to hear what the code enforcement officer and the building commissioner, what tools do they need to do their job better. They know the problem properties, they're even talking about a definition of what they call nuisance properties. There's a lot of stuff and energy, and they, but the timeline, to me, everything was for spring town meeting, annual town meeting. And I, my feeling is that there has to be something, you have to do something before then, even if it's just, just as we did tonight, voted on something that isn't the final product, but is better language than we have right now. So I'm a squeaky wheel in the group, I will tell you.
It's shocking.
Thank you. Shocking, I know.
Ms. Ford.
So what I heard tonight, Bruce, was that there was a recommendation that the people that were being outspoken about this go to the next select board meeting. And I, I'm going to guess that when that starts getting voiced at select board meetings, that they're going to, in turn, come back to this committee. That's, I would imagine that that's how it would, it would work, that that would come back to, the charge would come back to this committee through the select board as well. So that's what I'm hoping for.
No, I just feel like we're spinning.
Yeah.
Could I suggest, I would be willing to go to a select board meeting.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
And join with other members to say.
It's a great idea.
You know, this is what we're seeing and experiencing, and we don't have all the pieces or all the tools, but we want to express this. I mean, I was frustrated, Attorney Farber was here, we're talking about model leases. When Ms. Fetterman came, I was told, hold off, I'm looking up stuff, it's potential models, that's fine. She's going to have, doing a model lease. Well, she hadn't even started looking at a model lease, and Attorney Farber is the expert at really good leases for landlords in the town of Amherst, and he offered, he was representing the landlord group, please include us early on. And it could be February or March, or who knows. We're going to miss that piece, and then they're going to have an issue. That's the person that knows how to do the model lease, so.
I had asked this group if they had involved real estate agents, rental owners, and management companies in previous discussions, and they said that they had separate meetings with that group, because those, to me, those are stakeholders as well. We tend to think of the residential neighbors, but they're, everybody's a stake, there are a number of stakeholders in this, so that, you know, they have had separate meetings, but I didn't see any results. I mean, I don't know what transpired, but they assured me that that had happened prior.
I feel like we need some kind of report from them about what they've been doing, and I know they appeared before us, but the information was very general.
It was.
I feel as if I don't know how far they've gotten, and what they're looking at, and how long this is going to take, and when the public meetings will begin. I would agree with you, I'll be happy to go with you to a meeting at the select board if you want to.
Mr. O'Keefe.
I would suggest, if you're planning on talking to the select board about it, I have some secondhand knowledge of how things work on a select board, because I watch a lot of their meetings. But contact the chair and ask for it to be placed on the agenda, rather than just showing up, because if you just show up with comments, they'll not be able to discuss or act on anything.
Right, but first wanted to see if the board wanted to even take it.
I would agree with that.
To the, I would add to the town manager as well, if you can, try to bring it to his attention.
Who will send that message?
To.
To the select board.
I mean, I.
Would you be willing to?
Yeah.
Would you like to attend one of their meetings and talk about this?
Sure.
And if we think that critical mass from the Planning Board would be a good thing at that meeting, I would be willing to go also.
Do you want to specifically ask for the next, on their next agenda, which will be this coming Monday, or just when?
It's too soon.
Too soon, okay. Oh, okay. But, okay, I'll probably be not here.
All right.
So you'll let us know, are you going to, are you going to request it, Connie? Who's going to request?
It sounds like Ms. Brestrop.
Unless you want to do it.
No, it sounds, well, I'm going to be away from the 11th to the 23rd, so it might be.
All right, I can incorporate some of my other notes into that, so I should be able to get that out by the middle of next week. I don't know when that'll put it on their agenda for.
So I'm happy to go if I'm in town, and if I'm not, then other people can, you've got, you've got the message.
All right, thank you. It's actually, you know, that feels like more moving forward than we've done all night, just to decide to talk to some other people and try to move things up the chain.
So we should start at 10 o'clock all the time?
You're welcome to come in at 10 o'clock, Mr. Schreiber. Have a meeting.
Does it really start to the last minute?
What kind of upholstery?
All right, so do we have anything else that's got to be addressed tonight?
I have a couple of things.
Oh, we got to sign a decision, I think. Yes, Ms. Brestrop.
Oh, I just wanted to say that you had determined a few weeks ago that you didn't really think that TDR, Transfer of Development Rights, was something that would go ahead this fall. We have been in contact with PVPC, and we will be meeting with them, Jonathan and I will be meeting with Chris Curtis on Thursday afternoon, so we may have some report for you at your next meeting. We suggest that at least you keep it on the back burner and move it to the front burner every once in a while, so that, you know, it could be possibly brought to a spring town meeting. The contract with PVPC expires at the end of December, so we only have their help until then. You have been talking about TDR for several years, and several of you have, you know, asked staff to look into this, and we did hire PVPC to work with us on this, so just to show a good faith effort, to show that we're, you know, moving this along, I think it would be worthwhile to have it on your agenda a few times this fall.
I agree. We also have a letter from PVPC here, from Chris Curtis, offering us technical assistance again this year, and sending a checklist of smart growth strategies. I feel that we should not request any help this year from them until we've completed the project that they helped us with before. And I think we do need to move forward with it in a timely manner, but that we're overwhelmed right at the moment. So I think we owe Mr. Curtis a letter back, again, there's another letter, but saying thanks, and we're going to keep working on what we've got already, sort of. Does that make sense?
Would it be helpful to Mr. Curtis and to the staff if we had some time to maybe give some direction or some feedback, because we had this extensive presentation, and I know I had questions and concerns about certain things that were in there, and we never really, we didn't really get into it.
Yeah, we didn't.
If that's, I just don't want to imply that it's going to necessarily happen in the spring if we're going to be working on those centers, and that may preempt, but we're leaving you without a rudder at all.
Yeah, we are meeting with him tomorrow afternoon, so any thoughts you have, if you could possibly get them to me by, before 4 o'clock tomorrow afternoon, that would be helpful. I will be able to transmit information to him after that, but tomorrow is when we're, you know, kind of sitting down with him. So if you want to go back over your notes from that night, or go back through the document. It sounds like Connie has things on the top of her mind that she would like to share.
One thing I can remember.
That's great, please do transmit your things. That's great. Please do transmit your things. And on that, before, because I, just so I don't miss it, anybody on the board who's got comments on the language of these amendments, or anything to go to the zoning subcommittee, Mr. Crowner and the zoning subcommittee specifically asked us for our input on these other amendments, and we just didn't have time to address that tonight. So please send your comments to staff, and those zoning men carefully help improve them, so that when they come before us, they're, you know, a product of the whole board as much as possible. I would say, urge, urge that. Ms. Brestrop?
I'm sorry, just before, I know you're eager to adjourn.
Ah, no. I already know.
There are just a few things that I'd like to talk to you about. One is ZBA, public hearings that are coming up. One is for Hampshire Athletic Club. They're building a small addition and handicapped access ramp. Are you interested in looking at that? Another one is Northland Builders wants a special permit for pre-existing non-conforming structure. They're renovating the exterior. This is, I think, the Boulders. They're looking to change their exterior look. Right now, they have mansard roofs everywhere, and they're going with a more modern streamlined look. Are you interested in looking at that? It's really an architectural feature. Okay.
Can't help but improve it.
Yeah, really.
Do you want to know what's on the agenda for next time or not?
We'll read about it in the-
Surprise us.
Surprise us. Put anything on. You won't remember anyway if you tell us now.
A surprise guest.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We're adjourned.
Almost time.